Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We'll call to order this Bloomington City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, February 12th, 2024. Thank you for everyone who is joining us here in the council chambers, everybody watching at home, online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks for everybody being with us this evening. Our first order of business tonight, council, is to adopt our agenda. And our agenda, we've got a number of things under item two, our introductory items. We'll start with item 2.1, which is a review of the 2024 work plan for our Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission. We will then get an update from Dr. Nick Kelly on our public health workforce. Items 2.3 through 2.8, we're going to be doing a bunch of appointments, as we typically do this time of year. We're going to be making appointments to the following boards of commissions: Parks, Arts, and Recreation; Advisory Board of Health; Creative Placemaking; Human Rights Commission; Sustainability Commission; and the Local Board of Review. And that's item two, our introductory items. Our consent business is 16 items long this evening, and Councilmember Rivas has our consent business for us this evening. Under our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, and our organizational business, we go full-on planning tonight. We've got all kinds of planning-related things. Item 4.1 is a miscellaneous issues ordinance, the cumulative nonconformity. Item 4.2 is a resolution initiating rezoning of parcels northwest of Lyndale Avenue and the 94th Street intersection. Under our organizational business, we have three study items. One is a study item regarding the environmental standards review for low-density residential. Study item 5.2 is the RS-1 zoning district review, and 5.3 is to discuss accessory dwelling units, fence, and window covering standards. We will wrap up, as we always do, with item 5.4, our city council policy and issue update. Council, are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor, council, if you would, just to acknowledge for the record that Councilmember Carter is participating virtually this evening.
You beat me to it. I was going to do it. As we move to approve the agenda tonight, we're going to have to do our votes by roll-call vote because of Councilmember Carter and not being with us this evening. So, council, any changes? Or if not, I will move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by Councilmember Loman to approve tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. Ms. Mercer.
Aye.
Can you turn on your microphone, please? Here we go.
Sorry. Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Aye.
Councilmember Loman?
Aye.
Councilmember Muah?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero, and we have an agenda for this evening. And first up on that agenda is a review of the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission 2024 work plan. Our city charter requires us to, for all of our boards and commissions, to get a work plan from each of them at the start of the year, and so we'll start that process tonight with our Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission. We have our park director, Ann Catry, with us tonight, and the chair of our park commission, Laura Pearl. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for allowing me to present the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission 2024 work plan to you. I am the chair of the commission, and I am presenting on behalf of all the commissioners to you this evening.
Chair, if I could ask you to move the microphone a little bit closer. There we go. Thank you.
All right. So before we dive into 2024, we wanted to spend a little time discussing the 2023 park key accomplishments. First on the list was our park projects related to our park system master plan. The commission has been very involved, as you know, in the park system master plan. We've received monthly progress updates on both Bryant and Trentpa Park as they've been progressing through all the stages of development. We've been hearing and responding to resident feedback along the way, and we're very pleased with how the design of the parks have been so responsive to what we've heard from the community. Additionally, the commission has been involved in the Smith Park Playground Update. At this playground, we added a ninja-style challenge course, and really excited to finally deliver on an unmet need in our community with this really cool and innovative playground. The commission considered community feedback and reviewed and recommended the playground design. The commission is really excited to be a part of the Spring 2024 grand opening. In '23, we also worked on an Adopt a Park program. We reviewed and recommended guidelines and policies for both the program, as well as the new city webpage interface for residents and community groups. Residents now have avenues to actively participate in the maintenance of our parks. We also worked on a park maintenance and operational plan. This is really exciting because this is another thing that came from our park system master plan. We'll be reviewing and recommending adoption to the council in early 2024 on this plan. This is really exciting work that's going to help establish common expectations for maintenance across all of our parks, as well as resources required to meet those expectations. We're going to set levels of service for maintenance for all parks and amenities, as well as assign needed financial and staff resources to match that level of service. Finally, in 2023, we put forth a donations and memorial policy. The commission reviewed and made recommendations for this policy. This policy allows for generous and much appreciated contributions to our parks while managing them as public spaces for all to enjoy, while creating standardization and expectations for all donors, as well as city staff. In addition to those initiatives I've just outlined, the commission participated in some annual work plan projects. We tour Bloomington parks and facilities every year. Highlights this year, we're having meetings on site at Creekside Community Center, big, as well as getting into the parks and spending some time at both Bryant and Trentpa, at various stages and planning through the park redesign. Our commissioners also participate annually in the cultural arts support grant funding review and recommendations, and one to two park commissioners are a part of this review process every year. We also annually review budget fees and our 10-year capital improvement plan, as well as staying very engaged in all of our park planning and park projects through the park system master plan. There we go. Shifting into 2024, our commission initiatives, I want council to take note that we have a very big list of initiatives for 2024, and the commission is so excited to partake in all of these initiatives and the huge impact that they're going to make on our community. So first, the park maintenance and operations plan. I talked a little bit about this in 2023, and this will be forthcoming for adoption in this year. This process is going to set consistent standards of maintenance, and it's going to improve our operations, safety, and user experience across all the parks. So really important work there. The commission's also going to be working on an urban forestry master plan. We're going to review this plan and make recommendations for council. The commission has been getting some updates and giving feedback related to the Three Rivers Park District Partnership for operations at Highland Greens. I've been a part of the Highland Greens project for a while now. I was actually an original member on the task force, and as a task force member, the priorities and the voice of the community was very focused around maintaining golf in the city of Bloomington as a very important asset, as well as maintaining and preserving our green space. Through the Three Rivers Park District Partnership, the commission believes that we will be able to meet those priorities that the Highland Greens Task Force outlined almost 10 years ago, I believe. So really exciting to share more with the council about that this year as well. The commission will also be reviewing a Three Rivers Park District maintenance agreement across all regional parks, as well as making recommendations regarding future operations and maintenance of Bloomington's regional parks. Next up is the Bloomington Forward Project, and I know the community is incredibly honored to be working on all three of the Bloomington Forward Projects this year. The commission will serve as a key stakeholder by participating in community engagement, review project plans, or, yep, reviewing and recommending concepts, project plans, as well as pricing strategies. Also on the agenda for '24 is a sidewalk plowing reduction plan. Park will support staff as needed for community engagement, as well as making recommendations around levels of service for sidewalk plowing in the 2024-25 winter season. Another major agreement that we have in 2024 on the agenda is the master agreement between the city of Bloomington and Bloomington Public Schools. Park will review the staffing plan and make recommendations to council. We plan to look at fees, facility use, maintenance, and scheduling of facilities, as well as payment for services and funding of programs and facilities. Next up is the naming and renaming policy. The commission has started to review some draft policies and will make a recommendation to council. We're hoping that the naming and renaming policy will establish a systematic and consistent approach for official naming and renaming of all public spaces, including significant financial sponsorships, as well as corporate naming opportunities. The commission will make sure that given names are consistent with the values and the character of the area served, as well as ensuring that there's key criteria for determining a commemorative name are met. Finally, for 2024, the commission will continue to stay engaged in the Bryant and Trentpa Parks final design. We've been so involved throughout the whole process. We're really excited to see these parks in their final stages and their reopening to the public and come to life in 2024, as well as 2025. All right. So all of this work could not be done without the entire commission, as well as staff. So a huge thank you to all of our commission and those who couldn't be here tonight, so Andy Hoffman, our vice chair, Nicole Abraham, Darrell Leeger, Chris Fleck, Haneeen Carty, and Jonathan Minks. And a special shout out to the staff as well. They have been tremendous support and guidance for the entire commission this year. We're so impressed with all the work they take on, the thoughtful planning, and how focused they are at engaging the community and serving the city of Bloomington. And that is our 2024 work plan and a little recap on 2023. So if there's any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My goodness, you're busy.
Very busy.
You've got a full work plan for the coming year, and I guess I'm hearing you're meeting weekly now. That's maybe not. Okay, never mind.
We could. We could, definitely.
The look on your face told me no, but other than... So I appreciate this ambitious and this aggressive work plan, I really do. And with the number and the size of some of these projects, and the impact on a lot of these projects, I hope we can maintain this contact, maybe find time at least a couple times throughout the year to maybe have a touch point, bring you back in front of the council, and get some updates, and have a conversation back and forth about what might be going on, and what the council is hearing, what you're hearing, and what the progress is in all the projects. If that would be amenable, I think we could try and get that on the calendar. I think it would be a good thing to do.
Absolutely.
Very good. Council questions. Councilmember Loman, and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, it's a lot of work they're doing here. And to that point, one of the things I am concerned about with taking on all that, are you at all concerned about the quality of the work? You know, the mayor kind of joked about having additional meetings, but, you know, is there any concern at all with the number of items that are there, that we'd see some falloff with that at all?
Absolutely not. From a commission standpoint, I'd say we've been really energized and excited with all the work we've been doing throughout the park system master plan, and all the commissioners are very hungry and eager to dive in and do more work. We've really loved the community engagement projects that we worked on for the initial parks. So getting on the community and doing those engagement plans, everyone's really excited about that.
Well, it's apparent with small children, I hopefully will be successful in everything that you do with those parks. And the other one here that I had, just one other question, is I know that in years past, and I don't, and this, I may look to you, and we have had the Veterans Memorial as a part. I don't want to add any more work here. I don't want you to kill over on me there, as a part of this. And I was curious, is this now somewhere else? Who's kind of in charge of that piece?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, our facilities manager, Kristia Davenport, is, along with one of our civil attorneys, the two primary point people who are working on that, because we're at the point now, more of implementation than anything else. So we've had to take one or two things off of the Parks and Rec Department's table.
There's a lot of work going on over there. So, I mean, I haven't cringed when I even brought that up. It'd be nice to get, for the public, to get an update at some point of that project and where it's at, given that it's no longer at the commission level here.
Councilmember Carter, good evening.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the flexibility to join remotely. I am traveling for work, so appreciate this option. So I just want to say thank you for all of the work that the park commission has done, and yes, an ambitious work plan, but all very, very exciting efforts. And I started on council, and I think shortly afterwards, the park system master plan was passed, and so it's really exciting to see all of this, all of what was in that plan start to come to life in it even more substantial ways. So thank you. I'm also really excited about the maintenance plan for many reasons. So again, thank you for that work. My only comment was, you know, you touched just very briefly on the reduction in sidewalk plowing, and I know, and not this winter, but the winter before, we heard a lot of concerns from community members about the need for increased sidewalk snow plowing. And so I'm just wondering if somebody on staff could just describe that to ease any concerns that people might have, that we would not be plowing kind of like heavily-traveled sidewalks on public roads, but that this is more related to some of those residential areas that have sidewalks in the neighborhoods?
Councilmember Carter, members of the council, absolutely. You are exactly right, and I want you to know that we have not even started discussing this project yet, and before we kick off the project, it will be kicked off with the city council to get your feedback and your guidance, and then we will go back to the park commission to determine any work on that initiative afterwards. So I would expect that you'll be hearing from us probably a little bit later in the spring, because we want to use our summer programming opportunities to do engagement with the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things I wanted to touch on here. First, I just wanted to say thank you for looking at the naming, renaming sponsorship policy. As you know, that's something I've talked about for a number of years, so thank you very much for getting that in there. One of the other things that I think is important for people to understand, these park projects, particularly Bryant and Trentpa, are adding new amenities. And I know we've had concerns from people, I've heard them from people in my district, particularly related to hockey, that they went away, but the concept of the master plan is adding these new amenities. And when I look at this, we've got a skate park, I believe, in the plans. We've got the bike skills course. We've got, one of the other big concerns we've heard about is natural park restoration. These are why we're doing these parks, is to add new amenities. Am I missing some major things that people should be thinking about that, that we're going to be getting in the near future as a community?
Yep, absolutely. Great question, and thank you for calling out those new amenities. That was definitely something we focused on throughout the park system master plan and in listening to our residents. We're also really excited at Bryant Park that we will be adding our first all-inclusive playground, so that will be a really huge one for the community as well.
That's great. Last question, and this one's actually more of a question, but the Adopt a Park program, which I'm really excited about, any numbers or information about participation in that so far? I know it's new, just I know there's a lot of people that want to get out and help.
That's a great question, Councilmember Nelson, members of the council. We kicked off the program, I'm going to say midsummer last year, so we probably had a handful, and that's just off the top of my head. The program is focused on spring, summer, and fall, so we're really going to be kicking off the advertising and promotions for that program this year, and we're hoping to really hit the ground running with it this year.
Great. So this year will be essentially the first full year, sort of had a
Yes, it will.
Soft launch, we'll call it.
Absolutely. That is correct. Thank you.
Council, additional questions? If not, council, I would look for a motion to adopt the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission 2024 work plan.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Muah, to adopt the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Park, their 2024 work plan. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer?
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Councilmember Carter?
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Aye.
Councilmember Loman?
Aye.
Councilmember Muah?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas? Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much, and thank you. Thanks for the work over the past year. I know you've been very busy, and I know this year is going to be even busier. So keep up the good work. Please pass our thanks on to the rest of the park commission members, and Ms. Catry, if you could just pass our thanks on to the rest of the parks staff here in the city of Bloomington for the outstanding work that you folks do every day.
I most certainly will. Mayor, members of the council, I also want to thank Laura. Laura has been on the commission for six years. Andy Hoffman has been on the commission for six years as well. Laura has served as the chair for the last two. We could not have done the work that we've done over the past several years without their guidance and leadership. Thank you so much for all that you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council, for your adoption of this plan.
Next on our agenda, council, is item 2.2. This is an update on our public health workforce. Dr. Nick Kelly, our Director of our Public Health Operation here in the city of Bloomington is with us. Good evening, Dr. Kelly, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. In front of you, you'll see a picture of most of our public health staff. Wanted to walk through a little background in front of a consent agenda for you tonight. There has been work happening for years, more than a decade. Shack, the statewide Community Health Service Advisory Committee, or council, has been working very hard to modernize public health in Minnesota. We all want that incredible public health system that serves everybody in Minnesota equally, and doing this is one of the ways we can get to that point. That plan came up with a great framework in 2019. In 2020, they paused the work on that, resumed some of the work on that towards the end of '21 with a joint leadership team. The state legislator provided some funding to support that work. I joined the joint leadership team in 2023, and it really set this foundation for set of standards that everybody in Minnesota can expect from a public health system. It's based on a national set of standards, and with that funding from the legislators, we were able to do an assessment of where the state is in 2022. This is those standards. So you'll see there's five foundational areas up top. Our division does four of the five. Our wonderful Environmental Health Division does one of them, the environmental health. And then there's eight foundational capabilities that every health department in the state is supposed to be fully competent and capable of, and that's where a lot of this funding is being designed to help get everybody there, because we have a patchwork system. No health department in the state of Minnesota met all of those foundational capabilities, including the state health department. We have new funding coming in to help do some of this work. I say this is new, but this is all funding that has come before you. We have the opioid settlement funding, CDC infrastructure funding, response sustainability, which is the new state of Minnesota annual emergency preparedness funding, foundational public health responsibility funding, which is new annual state of Minnesota funding, a little bit left of our federal COVID funding, and we have upcoming cannabis funding this Gives you a little bit more detail about what that looks like. All of this funding has now come in through the process. Most of it is annual, so we will be getting the same amount every year. And with our agreements with Edina and Richfield, you'll see the amounts on the screen are for Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield, for the three cities combined. So knowing we were getting some of this infrastructure funding, knowing we were getting work that we needed to do to improve our workforce, we brought on a workforce consultant with some federal funding. They helped us come up with a plan to process this work. Our plan includes hiring nine new full-time staff and three temporary staff to help us with some of the COVID work, mostly recovery-related, and all of these positions are almost fully funded through the end of '27. We estimate there's about $4,000 short in '27, so it's, I mean, almost fully funded. We have a four-phase plan for this. Our first phase is two supervisors, then we have a bigger team. Those supervisors then get to hire some other team in phase three, and then sometime this summer, when the cannabis funding comes in, we'll be hiring a health educator to do that This is mostly just so you can see what we've done on our backend, is we've been braiding and connecting as much of the funding streams as possible to be as efficient and integrated So to kind of recap, there's about just shy of 1.2 million of new annual funding coming in for public health work. Most of this funding has very specific roles and responsibilities for it. One of the key things is it's not allowed to supplant current work, so most of this is new work, new capacity. We have a CDC infrastructure grant that's going to help us do some of that work, along with some training that ends in 2027. That was bridging some of that work, and so we will see a little bit of an impact in 2028 from a capacity standpoint that will be part of those conversations that we will be having with Edina and Richfield as we share those services. Any questions about that?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Appreciate the information and appreciate the, again, the aggressive nature, taking on a need and going after the necessary grant funding to make sure that we can fund those needs and provide the work for the residents of Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield. The one question I had, I noticed on your list of staffing positions, there were at least three that said they were temporary positions. Can you elaborate on that a bit for us?
Mayor, councilmembers, with that additional COVID funding we have, we did not want to hire long-term, full-time, because it's time-limited funding. And so we're anticipating three temporary staff working through the summer of next year to help us with COVID recovery work and doing various projects around that.
Thank you. Mr. Verbrugge?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and we do, when we recruit those positions, if they are temporary, we do stipulate that, so people who are applying for it have full knowledge and expectation of what the nature of the position is.
Thank you for that clarification. Council staff, council questions of Dr. Kelly tonight? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, great job going out looking for some grant funding, and I know that's an important thing for public health. Most of the budget is covered by grants. Just a couple of quick questions. If I understood correctly, this cannot be used to cover existing staffing, and is that true even if we shifted their focus to do new programming with that existing staffing?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Nelson, the, so for like the CDC funding, it's explicit, it's new hires, not to supplant. The foundational public health is, again, not to supplant, bring on new. We have moved a little bit of some of our existing staff around to build some of that capacity, so we've done a little bit of that, but the bulk of this work is to do some of those foundational responsibilities that we're not fully accomplishing to do right now, so...
Okay. Thank you. Second question I had, what are the tails of this? It looked like there's a couple hundred thousand, there's a few temporary positions that the mayor just did. You know, what are we looking at in '27, '28, '29? That sort of stuff that the city is going to have to take and consider in terms of its budgets?
Dr. Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. So... So similar to the most of our budget, we're going to get solid grant funding, so we're going to get just shy of 1.2 million. We think that's a conservative estimate. We don't know the dollar amount yet for cannabis, so we did not plan on using the full amount that we think we may get. But right now, our estimates is we'd be about $4,000 short in 2027, and you saw that about $200,000 short in 2028. So similar to the rest of the way our budget works, with, we're going to have stable, solid funding that covers the majority of the cost, and as our staffing costs go up every year, that number, we're going to have a gap that we're going to work to cover and work through our budget process to do that.
Okay. So just for clarification for us and the council, this is not the same as the fire department, where we know that's going to end, and then we're going to have to cover it. You expect this to continue, which is, again, and I was privileged to sit in with the strategic planning with public health a few years ago, and, you know, most of the budget is that way, and that has to be extraordinarily nerve-wracking. To know that you're depending on all these outside places to get that funding, but we appreciate it. My last question, actually, I have two more. In terms of these positions, is there any more process in terms of approving positions that the council needs to do?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I think that we may have a couple more that we have to bring through for approval, that we have to get through the HR process for what we call B7 process, approving the positions. So they'll come back and they'll be on the agenda because we have to add them into the compensation plan. It's probably the only thing that we'll come back to in regard to this.
Okay. Then my last question, I know some of this stuff goes to mental health, and I know there's a huge crisis with our students, kids within, I mean, does this provide any resources to allow us to help our partners over at the school district with the issues that they're working on?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Nelson, yes. So one of the new teams we're going to be developing, and I'm happy to dive a lot deeper into that process, but we're going to have a new team that's going to be working on substance use, mental health, and well-being and policy. And so there'll be a supervisor and a handful of staff just doing that work and working with our partners and having a lot more capacity, because right now, most of that work is, other duties is assigned to staff. And so this will give us some capacity to do some of that work. And to your earlier point, this, most of the state funding is in the state budget. So it's base funding, unless that changes, it'll be there every year.
Mr. Verbrugge, and then Councilmember Carter, I see you there, and we'll get to, Mr. Verbrugge, you wanted to comment here, I believe?
Councilmember Carter can go first, that's fine.
Councilmember Carter?
Summary comment.
Well, thank you, city manager. So first, I just want to thank Dr. Kelly for his leadership in this effort with the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee and the Joint Leadership Team that has been really helping shift and transform our public health system across the state. And I will say, being part of the Shack as our representative on council, I have gotten to be part of conversations and hear from public health leaders across the state, as well as elected officials, primarily at the county level, because that's how a lot of the state operates their public health services. And I just have to say, we have, we have really good things happening in Bloomington, and we are very lucky to have the leadership of Dr. Kelly and our whole public health team here. There are a lot of public health departments across the state really struggling. And so, again, just want to thank Dr. Kelly and the whole public health team. And then I guess my question, and you alluded to it right at the end there, Dr. Kelly, you said most of this is now in the base budget, it's state funding. And I know that during the last legislative session, there was some pretty significant public health funding passed for local public health. Is that, is that what this is part of, as part of that transformation work?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Carter, yes. The foundational public health funding and the response sustainability are both new funding streams, the, one of the largest investments we've seen in the state of Minnesota for the public health infrastructure in decades, and we're hopeful that we will see additional investments in the future. And I appreciate your feedback. I am very proud of our staff.
And I will just say, the Shack and the Local Public Health Association advocated quite a bit on that new funding. And as Councilmember Nelson was alluding to, oftentimes, historically in public health, it's just been grant by grant by grant, with some state funding streams for things like WIC. And so this public health funding that is now in the base budget that will be ongoing is going to be really critical for public health, so just wanted to add that.
Thank you for the context, councilmember. Councilmember De La Sando?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you, Dr. Kelly. Thanks for being here. And I don't want to lean in on Councilmember Carter's time on this council, on this commission as well, but what I'm interested in is the measurement and criteria for outcomes related to this. So, you know, obviously, when we talk about, for example, health equity, or we talk about substance abuse, we're expecting some kind of positive outcome. How is that defined? Are there requirements as part of this funding that is coming in from the state that we need to track? Are, you know, whose job is it going to be within the public health department to do that? Can you describe that a little bit for us? And, I mean, I'd love to know what goals we're trying to achieve, if any, which I assume there'll be a ton of them, but anything you could help us with would be great. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember De La Sando, yes, there is a lot that will be tracked. A good example is the response sustainability funding. There are eight red cap sheets that we will be filling out on a regular basis, describing what we're doing, how we're doing it, and meeting some of those goals. Some of this is really a work in progress from the state standpoint. We have a set of framework and some operating definitions, and my understanding is that the next Shack meeting will have a new work group being formed to really set some really clear definitions and outcomes for what some of this work looks like. It's an emerging, complex challenge across the country, as people are trying to thread that needle of what's it mean to do this in your community with a national framework that we're going to be on the front seat for. So there is a lot being tracked, and we're integrating this into our performance measure process across the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick follow-up then for you. What is the role of Hennepin County and, to some other extent, maybe our Bloomington Police Department, for example, as it relates to substance abuse? What is the role of them as partners in those outcomes? And how are they participating in what we're trying to do at this? You know, do we have responsibilities to them, or do they have responsibilities to us as it relates to partnering on those outcomes?
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmember De La Sando, I'm assuming you're connecting to the opioid funding, which is where we're doing a lot of that substance work. We're working very tightly with the council, or not the county, on that work. So we're partnering with them, coordinating with them, as one of the public health entities within Hennepin doing that work. We have a great relationship with our police department, very frequent collaboration in that process, and so we're jointly approaching a lot of things. On the county end with the opioids, we're mostly there understanding what they're doing because we're far ahead of the other cities in Hennepin County that don't have a community health board to do this work. On the cannabis, we're doing a similar approach. We're coordinating with multiple partners within the city, the Advisory Board of Health, and then we participate in regular conversations with our colleagues in Minneapolis and in Hennepin to understand how they're approaching these things, so that we're on top of that and trying to stay on the forefront.
Counsel, anything else? Mr. Verbrug, oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Lohman?
You know, Mayor, I do have more extensive questions, and certainly we can get together and talk about them. And you don't even have to answer this one here, I'll just give it quickly to you. I'm interested with the eight priorities that are out there with this plan that you've laid out, and maybe there is a more concrete plan that's out there. When do we expect to, you know, eight to seven, get to a point where we'd be able to, you know, have something in each one of these areas that would be able to, you know, across our three cities, be able to really help with those things or be useful in that process? So that's my question. Don't have to answer it now, but I'd be interested to have that offline.
Very good. Mr. Verbrugge?
I think, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, similar to Councilmember Carter's comments, I just wanted to acknowledge Dr. Kelly and the work that he does and all of our folks in public health. But as you can imagine, when there is this significant of an increase in the resources that are coming into the system, being very thoughtful about how those resources are being deployed for maximum effect, councilmember De La Sando, I want to acknowledge the work that Dr. Kelly did, working with the team that actually came up with the allocation formula, for two reasons. One, I think it highlights how important Bloomington Public Health is viewed as a partner for the state. And secondly, I think it speaks to Dr. Kelly's credibility within the community. And from our perspective, we just appreciate his advocacy for our Tri-Cities Consortium in making sure that we are always at the table and, you know, being appropriately considered because I think the formula is very favorable to our three cities.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. And your comments bring up a question, the additional 12 people, where are they going to sit?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we have a lot of people who are hoteling, and we're sharing spaces, and we're going to find workspaces where we can. So I know that's a work in progress right now. I don't know that we have a definitive answer just yet.
So, Mr. Mayor, with the support that council provided to do some furniture remodeling in our building, the nine new full-time staff will all have a cube space. We're able to do some efficiencies and improvements. We will have a little bit of hoteling, but we are doing our best to continue to build on the investment that council has been making for decades.
Thank you. Good to know. Thank you much. Counsel, this was for information only. No action required on this, so thank you very much, Dr. Kelly. Always good to see you, and thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Counsel, up next, we have a series of appointments for our boards and commissions within the city of Bloomington. And as we get into that, before we get into them, I wanted to kind of set the stage that we, for you, you know it, but for anybody watching and anyone here this evening. So last week, the city of Bloomington conducted our interviews for our boards and commissions for our 2024 year. City received 47 applications from residents, hoping to serve the city on the Advisory Board of Health, the Creative Placemaking, Human Rights Sustainability, and Parks Arts and Recreation Commission. I appreciate the council, your work, because each council, or each interview panel included one current commission member and one member of the city council. There were four dozen interviews in five different rooms over the course of about four hours here at City Hall, and we had one person describe it as municipal speed dating, and I think that was about right because we went through a lot. I do appreciate, because after the interviews, the panels reflected on the applicant pool, we looked at the, tried to identify the applicants that had the most valuable skills and experiences to make an impact on the commission that they were applying for. And I get it that the, we had 47 applicants, and we only had 40, only had 14 openings, which means there's going to be some disappointed people tonight who aren't appointed. And I think it's a good problem to have, I guess, but it, I know folks will be disappointed. I want to thank everybody who did step forward to apply for this, for all of our boards and commissions, and encourage anybody to continue trying to serve the city, looking for ways to serve the city, whether it's in your faith community, in your kids' schools, with a sports team, nonprofits, we've got plenty of folks who are looking for help there. It just, it's very impressive, the number of people who are willing to step forward and help make this a community, and what is it, a enduring, gosh, I blanked on the mission, my bad, an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. And so, very well done to everybody who stepped forward. Thank you so very much to the council that helped out, thanks to the staff and the commission members who did all the interviews, thanks to our folks and our co-ed team that put it all together. It was, it was a, it was a big operation. It was a big operation, and they did a very nice job with it. So with that, I would like to dive in, and I'll take the lead on item 2.3, and I kind of want to set this up in this way, and I hope we can follow this kind of, this template about how we introduce these and how we talk about all of this. So our Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, the interview panel was myself and Chair Peral. We interviewed 17 different applicants, and we had one incumbent for three open spaces. And we, in our discussions, came up with four criteria that we were looking for in our applicants. Folks who were community engagement-focused, folks who are open-minded, interested in hearing all viewpoints, and big-picture thinkers with a long-term perspective, because I think that's very important. And we talked to, as I said, 17 different folks, a great group, a very interesting group, a diverse group of skills, a diverse group of backgrounds, and folks who could absolutely help in a number of different ways. We did settle on some recommendations, and so the interview panel has recommended the appointment of Nicole Abraham, the appointment of J.C. St. Ange, and the appointment of Toby Pergers to all terms from March 1st, 2024, to February 28th, 2027. Those are the recommendations of the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission interview panel. And with that, a council will open this up for consideration. Councilmember Lohman?
Well, Mayor, it appears that your panel went through this information, have made three recommendations, and I'm prepared, if we're ready to do that, to go ahead and move.
If there's no conversation, I think what we want to do is officially do our votes, officially do the vote, but I just want to give folks the opportunity if need be. Very good. We have in front of us the names of our, the folks who, the five finalists that we thought would have the greatest impact on the Board of Commission, we've got our three recommendations. And so we will have Safa, if you could call the roll call, and we will make our votes and go forward from there.
Absolutely.
Everybody gets three votes.
Councilmember De La Sando?
I will vote per the recommendations, Abraham, St. Ange, and Pergers.
Councilmember Rivas?
I vote for that recommendation as well, for Nicole Abraham and J.C. Ange.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Abraham, St. Ange, and Pergers.
Councilmember Lohman?
I'm going to do the same thing. Abrams, O'Gee, and Pergor.
Councilmember Muah?
Abraham, St. Ange, and Pergers.
Councilmember Carter?
Abraham, St. Ange, and Pergers.
And Mayor Bussie?
Abraham, Pergors, and St. Ange. Counsel, I would move that we appoint Nicole Abraham, Toby Pergers, Pergors, we're going to have to get that name down perfectly, and J.C. St. Ange to spots on the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, the terms running from March 1st, 2024, to February 28th, 2027.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the appointments as stated. No further counsel discussion on this? Ms. Mercer?
Thank you. Councilmember, oh, I'm, Councilmember, Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
My apologies. Councilmember Carter?
Um, aye.
Councilmember De La Sando?
Aye.
Councilmember Lohman?
Aye.
Councilmember Muah?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas? Thank you.
Congratulations to our new appointees. And a little bit cumbersome doing it in this way, since we have to do it all by voice vote, but I appreciate everybody's patience with all of this. Item 2.4 is our appointments to our Advisory Board of Health. Councilmember Carter, I know you were the councilmember who was working on that interview panel. Anything you want to say as we head into the recommendations that were made by the interview panel?
Yeah, so we also had some really strong candidates, and so it was a difficult decision. But as we prepared ahead of time, we decided that, you know, we really wanted to make sure we were focusing on people who very clearly stated their commitment to filling out their term. There had been some transition or some turnover on the Advisory Board of Health, so really looking for people who expressed that commitment to the longevity that we need in those positions. We noticed that they, that although most of them are quote-unquote provider positions, many of them were people who may have had others, other licensures other than an MD. And so we thought if there were a provider who applied, that would be a good perspective. And then kind of the topic areas that we thought would be important to have interest or expertise based on the work plan of the Advisory Board of Health were around mental health, cannabis, and then housing. And so we did end up making our recommendations. So we are recommending Annabelle Kornblum for the consumer position. She does come with an MPH, or Masters in Public Health. She currently sits on the Advisory Board of Health, so she had filled a vacant term. I think she was on for about a year, and she I think she was on for about a year, and she comes with a strong background in housing and currently serves on the Bloomington Housing Action Team as a representative of the Advisory Board of Health. So she's a very committed and valued member, and so we thought that she would, she should continue her, her service on that board. And then we are recommending Dr. John Allen for the provider position. I will just say, if you're ever really interested in reading probably one of the longest CVs you've ever seen, read his. He comes with a substantial background, not only having an M.D. but an MBA, one of the leaders in, like, I'm not going to say it right, he's like a G.I. doctor, but he's got so many awards and published papers and all kinds of stuff. And he has recently retired and is living in Bloomington with his wife and has a really strong interest in population health, mental and behavioral health, and cannabis, and actually just recently did some training on cannabis. And so we thought he would be a great addition to the board.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Counsel, any questions of Councilmember Carter? If not, let's get into the voting for the Advisory Board of Health appointments. Ms. Mercer. And everybody gets two votes here.
Councilmember Carter.
Um, Kornblum and Allen.
Councilmember Mua.
Kornblum and Allen.
Councilmember Nelson.
Kornblum and Allen.
Council, okay. Councilmember DeLisandro.
There we go, Kornblum and Allen.
Councilmember Loman.
I'm going to switch it up, Dr. Allen and Kornblum.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Allen and Kornblum.
Thank you. Mayor, Bussie.
Kornblum and Allen.
I already had you down.
Councilmember Carter, would you like to make the motion?
Um, I would, I don't have the motions in front of me because I only have my little laptop, so I have like limited screens, but I would make the motion to appoint Annabelle Kornblum to the term, the consumer term, and Dr. John Allen to the provider term as stated on the motion sheet. I don't know if that works, but...
Second.
That works very well, and just to clarify, these are for terms from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2027. You got it perfect, Councilmember, perfect.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, I think, by Councilmember Loman, to make the appointments to the Advisory Board of Health as stated. No further council discussion on this. Ms. Mercer.
Council Mayor, Council Mayor, Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Mua.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Congratulations to our new members of our Advisory Board of Health. Moving on to item 2.5, our Creative Placemaking Commission appointments. Councilmember Loman?
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and I want to acknowledge that the city had won an award for its creative placemaking in the city. And this particular commission is working on trying to bring place, placemaking across the city, and so that's going to be a huge initiative, along with a number of other initiatives that the Creative Placemaking was a part of here. This panel was with additional two members who had only served for about a year. We reviewed 10 outstanding applications. And what I would just say is that for those folks who did not have the opportunity to be appointed this time, please, please do apply next time. It was a very difficult decision, but fortunately, staff had prepared and put us together in terms of figuring out what our priorities were. And so we had, had set forth around trying to find a candidate with a business mindset and with the, the number of the initiatives that I did mention here, and also with that creative placemaking piece, we looked for eagerness to try to bridge the gap of making contacts with connections with diverse communities and Bloomington public schools. And so we had a number of applicants that kind of fit those bill, and those are the ones you see in front of you, the five folks. We had two folks that were returning, and they'll bring additional breadth and history to this particular commission, and so we recommended that those folks be reappointed, and those are the names of Jamie Schumacher, and then also Jessica Anderson. And then the new person that we had recommended for the slot was Thao Pham. And so with that, Mayor, I turn over this recommendation of those three individuals.
Any questions of Councilmember Loman here? No questions, we will move on to our voting for item 2.5, our Creative Placemaking Commission appointments. Ms. Mercer.
Councilmember Mua.
Schumacher, Anderson, and Pham.
Councilmember Loman.
Schumacher, Anderson, Pham.
Councilmember Carter.
Schumacher, Anderson, Pham.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Schumacher, Anderson, and Pham.
Councilmember Nelson.
Schumacher, Anderson, Pham.
Councilmember Rivas.
Schumacher, Anderson, and Pham.
And Mayor Bussie.
Anderson, Pham, and Schumacher.
Thank you.
Councilmember Loman?
I'd be happy to make a motion to appoint Jamie Schumacher to a term of, from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2027, and then appoint Jessica Anderson to a term from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th of 2027, and also appoint Thao Pham to a term from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th of 2027. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Mua, to make the appointments to the Creative Placemaking Commission as stated. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Mua.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations to our members of our Creative Placemaking, Creative Placemaking Commission. Item 2.6 is the appointment to our Human Rights Commission. Councilmember Mua, you were working on that interview board, were you not?
I was, thank you, Mayor. I, I again, just want to say how impressed I was with the number of applicants that we had. Everyone brought a great perspective and lived experience, which was exactly what we were looking for, was broadening our lived experience within that commission, representing different perspectives within the commission, and then also individuals who were connected and already actively working within the community, whether it was their faith groups, whether it was schools, sports, whatever it was, just having that connection to the broader community to bring those perspectives within the Human Rights Commission. And so as we continue to dive into it, we really wanted to also ensure that our members understand the Minnesota Human Rights Act, have professional and lived experience, were able to really strengthen those relationships and, and forward the work that we are doing here with the Human Rights Commission. And so out of those interviewees that we had, we feel that Thomas Burns, Hussein Daher, and Carol McDonald were really going to be the, the folks that would have the most impact on that commission to provide the perspective that we were looking for.
Counsel, any questions of Councilmember Mua? And to be clear, the recommendation here is for Burns and Daher to be appointed to a term from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2027, and Carol McDonald to a term from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2025. Just to be clear on that. Councilmember Rivas?
I do have a question.
Can you turn your microphone, please, sir?
What was the criteria in their background that you could see, that you took into consideration to choose these three candidates?
Yeah, I think the, the biggest background for us is that interconnectedness already with the community. So the, the folks that we chose were already very active, whether it was at their church, youth groups, or supporting other organizations that supported people within the community. And so that's really what separated the, the folks that rose to the top, so separated Thomas Burns, Hussein Daher, and Carol McDonald in our decision, was having that extra involvement and engagement within the community that would allow us to bring in broader perspectives. I know a lot of times the commissions are a step to, to start getting that engagement, and so we felt like we were looking for, to, to add that extra layer to, to strengthen the commission that we have.
Thank you.
You're good. Any additional questions of Councilmember Mua? If not, let's begin our voting, if we could, on item 2.6, our Human Rights Commission appointments. Ms. Mercer.
Councilmember Nelson.
Burns, Daher, McDonald.
Councilmember Rivas.
Burns, Daher, McDonald.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Burns, Daher, McDonald.
Councilmember Carter.
Burns, Daher, and McDonald.
Councilmember Loman.
McDonald, Daher, Burns.
Councilmember Mua.
Burns, Daher, McDonald.
And Mayor Bussie.
Burns, Daher, McDonald. Councilmember Mua?
All right, so I would move to appoint Thomas Burns and Hussein Daher for a term of March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2027, and Carol McDonald to a term from March 1st, 2024 to February 28th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to make the appointments to this, to the Human Rights Commission as stated. No further council discussion on this? Hearing none. Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Mua.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations to our members of the Human Rights Commission. Item 2.7 is our appointments to the Sustainability Commission. Councilmember Nelson, you staffed that commission interview process for us?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and I appreciate all of my colleagues saying really nice things about the people that applied to their commissions, but we had exceptional people apply to this commission, so just wanted to point that out. This is a, a commission that is very active, engaged with the commission plus work groups plus events and things like that, so really looking for people that, one, could meet the baseline requirements, and two, had experience in different areas. There's a whole matrix of their different experiences to make sure that we have people with regards to energy efficiency, environmental aspects, water, water, all of those different things. So it's a, it's a tough decision that balances sort of the needs of having a broad base of understanding for this group, and that's how we came about our recommendations. The other thing that I do want to just note for everybody here, that one of the individuals that I'll be recommending had previously applied and not been selected. So please, if you don't, and you do a good job, please keep going. It may just be that, hey, there was someone that had a specific thing that the individual's looking for, or the opening that was available made sense for them to be there, but, you know, great people on all these commissions don't, if you want to get involved, just keep, keep applying, because there are opportunities. So with that, the recommendations from the group are for Alex Brand, Sarah Cobb, Biñay Akare, so I apologize on the pronunciation.
Counsel, any questions of Councilmember Nelson regarding the recommendations of the Sustainability Commission interview panel? Councilmember Loman?
Not really a question, but just a brief, I wanted to just point out and lift up one of my colleagues, Sarah Cobb, who's really asked a lot of questions and has done just an outstanding job, and I'm looking forward to, if this body decides to appoint you further to serving with you in the future.
No further council comment on the recommendations made by the Sustainability Commission interview panel? Hearing none. Ms. Mercer.
Councilmember Loman.
I'll go with Sarah Cobb, Alex Brand, and Bianna Akar.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
I'm going to go with Brand, Cobb, and I think it's Acharya, right? Acharya? Okay, well, I apologize. Biñay, I feel bad. Yeah, Biñaya? I feel bad that we don't know that ahead of time. Maybe phonetical spellings would be good for us.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, as, my last name is terrible, and Ms. Mercer's getting a workout with my last name tonight, so I appreciate proper name pronunciation, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Brand, Cobb, Acharya.
Councilmember Rivas.
Brand, Cobb, Acharya.
Councilmember Carter.
Brand, Cobb, Acharya, and I ditto Loman's or Councilmember DeLisandro's comment.
Councilmember Mua.
Brand, Cobb, Acharya.
And Mayor Bussie.
Brand, Cobb, Acharya. Seven zero was the vote. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd move to appoint Brand and Cobb to terms from March 1st, 24 through February 28th, 27th, and Acharya to a term of March 1st, 24 through February 28th, 26th.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Loman, to make appointments to the Sustainability Commission as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those, oh, excuse, Ms. Mercer, please.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Mua.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations to our appointees to the Sustainability Commission. Item 2.8 is our local Board of Review appointments. This was a bit different because we had two openings and two applicants, and I know that the applicants were, they, they were specified, or they specified a, a specific interest in this Board of, a Board of Review for the city of Bloomington. There, I believe they came in for an interview, but I can't say that for certain. I believe they did, but with just the two of them applying, counsel, I would move approval of appointments for Beth Riley and Mary Beth Workmeister to the local Board of Review.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember DeLisandro to make the appointments to the local Board of Review as stated. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
No, we don't, we don't need to do the vote.
I'm sorry, then we can just go straight to the motion. Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Mua.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations to our appointees to the local Board of Review. Counsel, I want to say that, first of all, Ms. Mercer, thank you, appreciate it, there was a lot to go through, and the voice votes on all of this with Councilmember Carter offsite, and I know it was a, a big commitment for the council as well, to, to chair these, or to be part of these interview panels, to review everything and to, to come to an agreement. I mean, there was, there was a lot of hours put into this, but I have to say, this way of doing it is so much better than what we used to do. We're just looking at sheets of paper and trying to make decisions into it. Thank you so very much. And as I said, I want to thank the co-ed staff that put so much time into this as well because it was not a small task. And one last thank you to all of the applicants, those selected and those not selected for, for putting their name out there. It's not an easy thing to do, and sometimes you're disappointed, sometimes you're not, and I appreciate people's willingness to step forward and serve their community. I really do. Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, do we ever, you know, again, thank you, I mean, we've come a long ways with this, a long ways. Do we ever send thank you notes at all to these, these folks that, that apply? I'm just, just kind of curious. I don't know if there's a cost associated with that, or if that's something we've done in the past, but I just, you know, feel particularly moved after this, this last batch of folks, not that any other batch has applied, has been different, but wow, I mean, these folks really, it was a tough decision.
I think that's a good suggestion, Councilmember Loman, a good suggestion. Mr. Fabrucci?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I believe we talked about this last time, in that we do follow up to let them know the outcome, and I'm sure there is some sort of a gratitude as part of that message. I'll confirm that with Emily Larson and make sure, and if not, we can talk about adding that in the future.
You're good. All right, thank you. And yes, specifically thank you to Emily. I know she, I don't think she's here tonight, but thank you to Emily Larson, who does fantastic work with us.
She is watching in the ether, so.
We will move to item three on our agenda, is our consent business tonight. Councilmember Rivas with our consent agenda. Councilmember Rivas?
I move to approve...
Councilmember, we're going to need your microphone on.
Sorry. I moved to approve the consent agenda from 3.1 to 3.5, 3.7, and from 3.9 to 3.16.
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Rivas, second by Councilmember Lohman, to accept the counts, uh, the consent business as stated, and so if I'm clear, then, uh, Councilmember Rivas, just so I'm clear on this, we're holding out item 3.6 and 3.8, is that correct?
That is correct.
Perfect, that's what I thought you said, and I just wanted to double check. We have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent business. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Uh, item 3.6. Who held 3.6? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Yep, so I hold, I held, uh, 3.6, which is, uh, in cave companies, apartments and daycare, prelim and final development plans, CUP, uh, for 6701 West 78th Street, and, um, what I'm gonna do is immediately turn this over, uh, to the city manager. I had asked the city manager, um, uh, have a comment on this.
Mr. Verugui?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman. Uh, this particular item, councilmembers, uh, had some concerns expressed to, uh, various members here about, uh, contractor or subcontractor associated with the project who may not have, uh, followed state labor requirements, so our staff has talked, uh, to, uh, counsel for the applicant, and, uh, we've been informed that all the subcontractors on this project are in good standing with the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry, and good standing, uh, means that they are in compliance with state law. So, uh, our expectation, I know that it is a value of the city councils, that worker rights and, uh, um, uh, uh, the rules around, uh, workers, uh, are followed, both state law and our city ordinances, and that's our expectation for anybody who's gonna do work in the city of Bloomington.
Thank you, Mayor, and understanding that this, uh, the, of the, uh, critical nature of this, I'd be happy to, unless there's any other comments, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I see Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that that's all like layers of subcontractors, because sometimes it can be like a subcontractor of a subcontractor of a subcontractor, and I think that's usually when the problems, like that's where they emerge the most, and so I just want to clarify, it's not just the direct subcontractors, but all subcontractors.
Mr. Verugui?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, uh, we do have counsel for the applicant is here, and I think he'd, uh, like to address counsel as well.
Mr. Coyle, good evening, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff, good to see you. Uh, Councilmember Carter, to your question, uh, there were a number of subcontractors identified during a recent meeting here at the city, so we started with that list of identified subs, and we took that list to the Department of Labor and Industry and asked them to screen them, and they came back and confirmed that they were all in good standing. Uh, but in addition, uh, later in the week, we went back with a supplemental list of potential subcontractors that were being considered for work on this project, and asked that the department confirmed that their standing was, uh, fully in compliance with state law as well, and the agency came back to us this afternoon to confirm that they were all in good standing, so all the names that we had previously been identified, and those supplemental names have been confirmed to your city, city attorney, as being in good standing with the state of Minnesota.
Thank you, thank you for doing that, that work.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Also, are there additional questions on this? Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Do you mind if I ask a follow-up question of the council? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pardon me, thank you for being here tonight. Um, is that a, is that a general policy for you all as, as you go through this? So for example, let's say six months from now, um, there's an additional, uh, contractor brought forth or whatever to potentially do some work, um, would you, would you do that same review? Is that just part of your process normally, or do we need to request that from you regularly? I'm just kind of curious about what the process is. Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, thanks for the question, it's a good one. The evolving issue of, of workplace safety and, and workplace compliance is certainly important. This process that we're doing right through, right now, I will tell you, is novel. Most councils, most cities defer to the state agencies that are responsible for those enforcement issues. The Department of Labor and Industry in Minnesota, for example, is our primary enforcer. So it's not a normal requirement for cities that they would have the contractors identify who their subs might be on a particular job, mostly because they don't know. Right? Jobs change, projects change, the availability of contractors to work on jobs changes, so it's, it's a bit of a challenge to be able to say, here are 10 subcontractors that we are likely to work with. Uh, there's confidentiality aspects to it that we want to be respectful of as well, but if there is a specific concern raised about a particular subcontractor or contractor, I'm sure my client and any other contractor, uh, company that would be before the city would want to know about that for their own best interest, as well as those of the city that they're working within, so certainly if a question were raised in the future, as you say, six months down the line, we'd want to know about it, and we would, we would dutifully, uh, investigate it to make sure that we were working with folks that were in compliance with state law. Sure.
Very good. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I might just add, not that I'm in the same exact space, but I, as a remodeling contractor, um, we are audited by multiple agencies at the state level and have to provide information to our insurance companies and things like that, so we have to go through that process, make sure we verify licenses, insurances, all of those types of things. I don't know that it gets to Councilmember Carter's drilling down into subcontractors of subcontractors, at least at my level, but my understanding at the state level for large multifamily projects, they are required to do that by law in the last couple of years, and so, um, this is a very, very highly regulated area, and, um, unfortunately still, we have heard cases where people have slipped through, so appreciate the extra diligence on this one to give comfort to everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Everybody comfortable? Very good. Councilmember Lohman?
Be happy to make that motion again, thank you, this extra step. I'll move to approve preliminary and final development for a five-story, two, an eight-unit apartment building and detached 11,000 square foot daycare space at 6701 West 78th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, to accept item 3.6 on tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Lohman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item 3.8.
There's two, there's two motions for 3.6.
I'm.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that here. Here we go. Yeah, makes sense here, I'm gonna move, uh, in. It's on the second page, I didn't catch that page. Mayor, when you're ready.
Please.
Uh, Mayor, I'll move to approve a resolution of approval for a conditional use permit for 11,000 square foot daycare at 6701 West 78th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah, for the second motion associated with item 3.6 on tonight's consent agenda. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven zero. Finishing up item 3.6. Thank you. Now moving on to item 3.8, I believe that was Councilmember Lohman as well. Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, Mayor, uh, I held, uh, this is a resolution for, uh, budget adjustment, uh, to transfer strategic priority funds for BTT, uh, initiatives, and, um, as a, as a part of this, uh, there was, uh, a recommendation, uh, uh, for, uh, a climate, uh, we, we had declared a climate emergency in, uh, 2022, and, uh, as a part of that, we, uh, wanted to, as a commission, put together a climate action plan, and, uh, when a recommendation came from, uh, staff with regards, uh, to, uh, that, uh, we had, uh, gotten a specific number, and what the, the commission had done is had made the recommendation that we increased the amount of dollars, because one of the things we wanted to do with regards to our, uh, city's, uh, uh, climate action plan was make sure that we had the best and, um, and the brightest, uh, and the most comprehensive, and so we had recommended, uh, an increased amount of money, uh, for that, and, uh, and this amount that came back, uh, in this particular request, uh, ended up being $200,000, less than that, and so, uh, what my question was for staff was, is this the only piece of this request, uh, that we'll, we'll have with this? We had a unanimous vote, uh, uh, asking for additional dollars, uh, to be made available, um, and asked this council for additional dollars, and, uh, wanted to see if, uh, if this is the only request, if there'll be additional requests, uh, or, um, because it was a pretty strong request, and, uh, I, I just want to be sure that I understand, uh, how we got to this lower amount, which was originally brought, uh, to the commission, and we had, uh, unanimously asked for a higher amount, because we were concerned that we weren't gonna get the, uh, the best, uh, climate action plan.
Mr. Verugui?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Emma Strauss is our sustainability coordinator, and she worked with the Sustainability Commission, uh, to move the recommendation forward, so if you could share a little bit, uh, about the commission conversation and the rationale for the $300,000 as opposed to the higher amount.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Councilmember Lohman. So, last, um, at our commission meeting, the draft memo that came to the commission included $300,000, which is what I, um, uh, initially proposed, given other plans that I've looked at nationally of what the cost would be. As Councilmember Lohman stated, definitely there was interest, um, from the commission to have a higher amount, which the language then changed, which is included in their memo, of 3,000 is the baseline, and to meet the highest standard, the commission feels additional resources should be allocated on recommendation of staff after further research. I did some additional research since that meeting, without specifics of what would be, honestly, from all the conversations I've had with other cities, um, this would be a higher budget to go above 300,000. My recommendation is that we don't have specific reasons to do that, and we have a lot of things that we need to do with implementation dollars, so, um, definitely hearing, Councilmember Lohman was definitely correct, the commission definitely felt that a higher budget was needed. Based upon my research as staff, I haven't found specific need for that at this point, but if we come down the line and we start this initiative and recognize that we're not able to do what the community and council feels is needed, then my understanding is that we can come back to council and request additional funds.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you for the clarification, I just wanted to be sure that that had not gotten lost, uh, because I know the expectation from the commission is that we're bringing back, uh, you know, the, the highest and best, uh, possible thing that we can, given the, uh, you know, the import of our, our climate emergency that we find ourselves in, uh, I know the commission was very concerned, and wanted to be sure that we were bringing us the strongest recommendation that we could, and I appreciate your comments, and with that, I'd be happy to make the motion unless there's additional comments.
Additional questions, counsel? Councilmember Carter and then Councilmember Muah. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, so, um, I had a question on this one, too. I, I feel like we have talked about, um, uh, various items on this list for the strategic priorities funding, and so it's not a surprise that it's on the consent agenda, um, but I, the one that I was a little bit surprised by, the climate, um, change plan, and then I was also a little bit surprised on the food access plan, because I don't think we've ever, um, talked about that, and I think, um, I mean, my understanding of the strategic priorities dollars is that they're the council's strategic priorities, and so it would just kind of surprise me that we hadn't talked about it before, and it was on the consent agenda, and so, wondering if we could get, I know, I did get a little bit more explanation on the food access plan ahead of the meeting, but I do think, um, it's something that came up in the, uh, BTT strategic planning, and it also came up in the, uh, racial equity strategic planning when I was on that group, and so I think it's important for our community to understand what we may be planning there.
Mr. Verugui?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, uh, you're correct, we have not had a presentation on the food access plan, uh, we have had, uh, updates, uh, working on it in the BTT, uh, quarterly reports, and, um, uh, if, uh, if you feel that we would benefit by having, uh, a presentation, we can certainly arrange for that, either before we take action or, uh, afterwards, and I would certainly look to you for direction on that, uh, and if any of the others that are recommended here you feel need to come back for some additional discussion, um, I'm, I'm comfortable holding, uh, most of the items over if you want more conversation, with, uh, the exception of the one that I pointed out related to the, uh, joint, uh, study with, uh, the state on, um, disparities, uh, because we have another action committing to that process, and that is one that we have had, uh, multiple conversations with the council about, uh, previously, so I'll, I'm certainly open to whatever the council wants to do in this regard.
I, I, I personally would feel fine, um, moving it tonight, uh, again, because most of those things we've talked about, they've been part of past, uh, past staff presentations multiple times, um, and because the food access plan is coming out of the need identified in two, two different community-based strategic planning processes, I'm definitely okay with that, and then the climate change plan obviously is associated with our declaration of a climate emergency, so I'm also fine with that one, I just, again, wanted to note that we hadn't had a discussion, so I do think it would be helpful to have, um, a short presentation on, you know, what's being planned there for the food access plan. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, uh, we will have our public health team come back and do a quick overview of what the food access plan entails, the process and, and outcomes, uh, and I know that the sustainability presentation for their work plan is coming up mid-March, uh, and so we can certainly, uh, make sure to emphasize this, uh, I, I would note that this is largely staff work that's gonna happen on the sustainability climate, um, action plan, the commission is going to be supportive of it, uh, it's not going to take up many hours of their work this year, it's gonna largely be a staff-driven process, but they'll certainly be consulted and supportive, and we can talk about that again when they present.
It will definitely be a community, everyone will be involved who wants to be.
Councilmember Muah and then Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Thank you, Mayor, I, I just wanted to make a comment, um, to Ms. Strauss for just her, her due diligence and coming back and saying this is the, the cap, um, with what I'm recommending, I think that just shows the, the work that our staff does and how cognizant they are of our budgeting process and making sure that we're, we're being just good stewards of, uh, taxpayer money, and so I appreciate you for doing that and not just throwing a dollar sign on it and, and getting some, some facts and meat behind, uh, your recommendation, thank you.
Councilmember DeLaSandro?
Mr. Mayor, my questions were answered, thank you.
Very good. So if I can, uh, just kind of summarize where we, or, Councilmember Nelson, do you have a question?
Um, I don't really have a question, I just wanted to go on record that I would be in favor of holding the first two items over until we get more information, I just think as part of the process, to be able, for us to get the information as well as the community here, that information, I think is just good process. I know we've had discussions on the business retention program and multiple options there, we have had discussions on the hatch program, very exciting program, those were all done here, and, um, I know that we've already approved 3.10 for the other ones, so, which is, which is part of this, and I think is just a, a very, um, sensible thing for us to join other groups in terms of doing that type of reporting, but these, they're bigger dollar amounts, that's one part of it, but I just, I would like more information, and, totally respect the work that staff has done on this, the commission has done on this, sounds like maybe they're not in the same spot, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. And, and, and get that information, so that's just where I'm at, but, um, I think ultimately, just my last quick comment, I've talked a lot about strategic priorities, these seem like things that are one-time expenditures, not things that should have been in a budget somewhere else already, these make sense to me, given what our actions previously, so I don't, I don't see that ultimately they'll be held up, I just think that process of understanding would be helpful before I approve $400,000.
Very good. Any other comments on that, counsel? Any other comments on that, council? Councilmember Loman?
I'm not going to restate it. I think Councilmember Nelson, you've put forth a good proposal, and I'd be open to doing that.
Very good. So just directing a little traffic here. So if I'm understanding this, council would like to hold out the first two motions under item 3.8, the $300,000 for the Climate Change Equity Mitigation and Resilience Plan, and the $100,000 for the strategic, for the Public Health Food Access Plan, for further discussion, presentations by staff and further discussion, while moving forward with the other three, the State Joint Disparity Study, the Bloomington Hatch Program, and the funding for the Business Retention Program. Am I correct in that?
That's my understanding, there.
Anybody good with that? Councilmember Carter?
Yeah, I just have a clarification. So for those two items, when would they come back to us and would that cause like a significant delay in the work? Like, would there be these kind of ripple effects of us not approving tonight?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I checked in with our deputy finance officer, our budget director, Cory Carlson. Our understanding is there isn't urgency around any of these, with the exception of the disparity study to go along with the action we just took. So I think that we can get the food access plan presentation scheduled relatively quickly, and then I just look at Ms. Strauss and see if we can hold out approval until March 18th, when you're in for the work plan. That'll work just fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I look to Mr. Verbrugge or Ms. Manderscheid. So as we make this motion, is there a way to make a kind of all-encompassing motion, or do we have to make the three motions and then the two motions to hold those over? What's the best way to do this, Ms. Manderscheid or Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and council members, because we have two separate funds that we have, these going into, two of the actions are going into the 101 General Fund, the third one is going into the Port Authority Fund. We should probably keep those separate, so you could probably do two and two motions instead of three. But, yeah.
How about if we just do all three and keep it?
That sounds good.
Councilmember Loman, you're up.
All right.
You're lighting 3.8.
Yeah, so I think it's going to have to be three, because I think we're postponing two, and then we're moving to, and then we're, another one we're, we don't need to do, we could just let those ones fly? Okay, all right. So I'll let them just sit there.
Councilmember Loman?
All right. So I'll move to approve the Budget Adjustment Resolution to Transfer 80,270 from the 4200 Strategic Priorities Fund to the 101 General Fund to provide necessary funding for the State Joint Disparity Study.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to approve the funding as stated. No further council discussion on this. Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Loman?
I'll move to approve the Budget Adjustment Resolution to Transfer 50,000 from the 4200 Strategic Priorities Fund to the 101 General Fund to provide necessary funding for the Bloomington Hatch Program.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah to approve the Budget Adjustment as stated. No further council discussion on this. Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Loman?
I'll move to approve the Budget Adjustment Resolution to Transfer 45,000 from the 4200 Strategic Priorities Fund to the P210 Port Authority Development Fund to provide necessary funding for the Business Retention Program.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah to adjust the, or to approve the Budget Adjustment as stated. No further council discussion on this. Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you all very much, and with the understanding that the first two items in this item 3.8 will be back in front of us by 3:18, correct? Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Rivas, for doing the consent agenda for us this evening. We will move on now to item, actually to item four on our agenda, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And we have two things tonight. Item 4.1 we will start with, this is our miscellaneous issues ordinance, and Planning Manager Glenn Markergard is here. Good evening, Mr. Markergard.
Good evening, Mayor Bussey, council members. Let me pull up the presentation just a second. So council members, this item was last before you, December 18th. It's part of several ordinances that were kind of consolidated as the miscellaneous issues ordinances. The council continued consideration until this evening in order to further review the best date to use in the ordinance. Legal and planning staff have met and determined that date. I'll talk about that in a little bit. First of all, by way of background, the ordinance involves non-conforming site characteristics and when they need to be brought into compliance. Site characteristic, you can think of that as anything on the site outside of a building. So things like sidewalks or landscaping, fences, for example. So the code language currently reads that non-conforming site characteristics must be brought into conformance with current site characteristic requirements of the city code upon either redevelopment of the site or expansion of total floor area on the site by 25% or greater. So that's a pretty easy math exercise if we have an addition. However, if we have an addition of 15% in one year, and then five years go by, we have another addition of 15%, there's the question of whether or not this code provision is triggered. Staff has always interpreted it as being cumulative, so it goes back to the date of adoption in terms of figuring out that 25%. So what we're proposing is to codify that interpretation, make it more transparent. The underlying language would be new and would state, measured cumulatively for floor area expansions on or after January 24th, 2008. And that date was selected because it was the effective date of the ordinance in question. So it totally aligns with the past staff interpretation. So we do have two motions for you, one to adopt the ordinance before you, and then a second one on a summary publication resolution, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Markergard. Council, any clarifications on this? Clean up in language here? Pretty straightforward. If hearing no one, council, I would look for action on item 4.1 this evening.
Mayor, before we do that, might be helpful for the record to have Mr. Markergard discuss the past public hearings on this item so that it's clear for everyone listening.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. That's a good point. This is not a public hearing this evening, but obviously there have been public hearings on this ordinance through the years, and if you could just fill us in on that, Mr. Markergard, it'd be helpful.
Yes, Mayor Bussey, we did hold a public hearing on December 18th. That public hearing was closed, and the item was continued to tonight, so there was a public hearing held on it.
Thank you much. Councilmember Loman?
Then I'll go ahead and move to adopt an ordinance clarifying conformance triggers for conforming site characteristics related to cumulative floor area expansions, thereby amending Chapter 21 of the city code.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro to adopt the ordinance clarifying conformance triggers for non-conforming site characteristics related to cumulative floor area expansion. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Loman, summary publication?
Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of ordinance M., motion, what? Sorry. Ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the city code. Wow.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah for summary publication as stated for item 4.1. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Aye.
Councilmember Muah.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you much. Thank you, Mr. Markergard. Moving on, item 4.2 this evening. This is a resolution initiating, initiating the rezoning of parcels northwest of Lyndale Avenue South and West 94th Street intersection. Mr. Ramler Olson is here this evening. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Keep this to 10 minutes. Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I have to share my screen, don't I? Actually, I'm unable. Oh. I'm unable to share my screen. Thank you, Glenn.
Well done, Mr. Markergard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Yes, this is study item, well, there is a resolution to initiate rezoning of those parcels that were identified in the title, but this is, in addition to that or parallel to that, is a study item looking at the rezoning of those parcels northwest of Lyndale and 94th, and then some consideration of parcels that are southeast. So, sorry, one second. Yeah, so the proposal before you is rezoning a contiguous group of 11 parcels northeast of that intersection, and then we're requesting guidance from you all about expanding the area of rezoning to the parcels that are southwest of that intersection, Lyndale and 94th specifically, and then, yeah, considering a resolution to initiate the rezoning of the parcels at that northeast corner. So this is a map of the parcels under consideration. They're kind of split up by color. There's the, those groups to the northeast. They've been grouped together by the owner, Lupiant, which owns the six parcels up there between Garfield and Lyndale with 93rd at the north, and then the site of the David Fong's restaurant to the south. That's five parcels right there. And then we just have a row of parcels that are zoned B2. Oh, and I should have mentioned, these are all B2-zoned parcels, except one, the one at 9340 Harriet Avenue South, but otherwise they're all B2-zoned, and those are all the parcels to the southwest as well. Informing this, there's some background, I'm sure you're all familiar, but just brief highlight, the Lyndale Avenue Suburban retrofit plan, which was adopted in April 2021, promoted B4 as an appropriate zoning district for the vision that it espouses. So that's why we're coming to you all to see if this rezoning to B4 would be prudent in light of the retrofit plan. There was also some rezonings last year in September around 86th and 98th where we rezoned from B2 to B4. If you recall, the image to the right shows within the blue area what parcels were rezoned last September. And what's interesting that's occurring at 94th is what was identified at 86th and 98th, and that's the creation of a node, although fairly organically, we've had a few developments that are giving birth to this new node, 94th and Lyndale. There were, was, actually started off in 2003 with 96 units at Real Life Co-op, and then 2021, Lyndale Flats, that was another 81 units, and then just recently approved and still under construction, Oxboro Heights to the north at 125 units. These weren't factored into the retrofit plan because some of these are fairly new, and now we have new opportunities at the northeast of this intersection that, you know, in aggregate create a node at 94th and Lyndale. So staff is anticipating that and trying to get ahead of it to steer development that aligns with the vision in the retrofit plan. And looking at the land use around these two areas identified, within them, the parcels to the northeast are community commercial, they're guided community commercial, and those to the southwest are guided general business, and it just gives a good idea of what land, what the guided land uses are around those parcels. And then you see the zoning on the right, zone B2, and again, that one parcel zoned industrial. There are, again, a pretty mix of zoning districts around it. I guess I should draw your attention to the I-3 parcel to the west of the southwest parcels, that's where Sigler is located, so fairly heavy industrial area, but nonetheless, we wanted to get your guidance to see if we should consider rezoning or investigate those rezonings for those parcels to the southwest. As I mentioned, guided land use, general business, and community commercial. Community commercial is basically general business, but some larger-scale service and retail uses. Current zoning is B2, as I said, it's designed to provide a wide variety of retail and other commercial uses essential to support surrounding neighborhoods. It does allow more auto-intensity uses or auto-oriented uses, which provides some of the reason why it conflicts with the goals and vision of the retrofit plan, and therefore recommending B4 as that more ideal zoning district, which allows, you know, a neighborhood-scale commercial and residential mixed uses configured in a pedestrian-friendly manner. So this is a table comparing those two districts, B2 and B3, or B4, B2, B4, sorry about that. They're there for your reference. We can get to that in more detail if you'd like, but nonetheless, it is there if we want to refer back to it. Something that's always of concern when we're rezoning is what are the conformance or the conformance of the parcels under question, and if any non-conformities will be created with the proposed rezoning. We didn't get into all the site characteristics of what will be non-conforming if the rezoning does occur, however, but it's easy enough to look at uses, and there are a few parcels that will, that would be deemed non-conforming, legal non-conforming, if rezoning were to occur. But nonetheless, it's worth considering the status of those parcels in question. It's only three out of the number that's considered. As far as engagement, we have directly engaged the owners of those areas to the northeast, Lupiant and Fong. And the summary of that conversation is that they were receptive, but they didn't provide any definite endorsement of what staff is proposing, but nonetheless, they were receptive and willing to have a conversation about it, so we found that was pretty positive. And if staff were directed to consider those parcels to the southwest, we would engage in the same type of outreach, interfacing directly with those property owners and explaining the proposal and getting from them what their, what their plans are for the future, and if it meshes well with what staff is proposing. Planning Commission reviewed this on January 18th. There was unanimous, unanimous support for rezoning the parcels northeast of that intersection, Lyndale and 94th, and they also unanimously supported studying the rezoning of those parcels to the southwest. However, you should know that staff considers those parcels to the northeast a priority, and the ones to the southwest a lower priority. The ones to the northeast, those have high development potential, so we wanted to get ahead of that with this rezoning, so that's why we're coming to you, so with the proposal that we have. Next steps, yeah, so we're considering a resolution to initiate rezoning tonight, and if that were to go forward, and if staff, or if, sorry, city council were to support the rezoning, we would bring that to a public hearing in March or April. Here's recommended resolution language to initiate that rezoning, if you want to refer to that. Otherwise, I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ramler Olson. Council questions here? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, I don't have it off the top of my head, so I'm going to ask you to have it off the top of your head instead, which is not fair. I'm curious, can you, can you, at a very high level, just give us a slight understanding of like the uses, the permitted uses and the conditional uses that are different between B4 and B2? For example, if somebody wanted to develop a restaurant where Fong's is, right, because they're, got that building for sale, if we converted it to B4, would they still be able to do that? Or is that, are we removing that as a permitted use, given, given the use cases for each of these? I'm just looking for a couple of scenarios to understand what the impact might be from a permitted and conditional use perspective.
Sure. Mayor? Mayor, Councilmember DeLisandro, the, so, let's go back to that map. So, right now, this is actually the conformance with the B4 district. So, the restaurant on the Fong site would, that's just the use, though. I need to, you know, I should probably emphasize that, that is just the use. Haven't done the analysis to see if it would comply with all of the B4 standards, but nonetheless, the use does comply. There is an auto dealership at that northwest corner that consumes those two parcels, and then there's a auto repair place at the very south of the southwest parcels. So, that's why they were highlighted for not being in conformance with the B4 district. But nonetheless, if the rezoning, again, to reiterate, if the rezoning were to occur, they would be able to continue indefinitely as a legal non-conforming use.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Additional questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, just, I had a chance to kind of whip out the Lyndale Suburban retrofit plan, and, you know, I noticed there, there really isn't, you know, and you have already stated this, that there really wasn't a plan there, but, you know, given that there isn't a plan there, you know, with this in mind, you know, is there, is there a similar node that we should be using as our guidance, you know, for making that change? And I guess my, my real question is, why B4 and not something else, you know, in terms of that? Because it seems like a lot of our zones that we have, you know, in the retrofit, we're moving to that, and I get the short-term B2 to B4 is a little bit less, but, you know, if we're trying to be visionary in terms of this area, I just want to be sure that we're not overpopulating with one zone, and then having to make another zoning change later on. And so, I just want to be sure that we're, we're making a good long-term decision, as opposed to just a short-term decision.
Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, the choice to continue with B4, I, I don't have the recollection of how the, or, I just wasn't there to experience the creation of the retrofit plan, but I believe B4 was arrived at because it was most, it was more suitable for Lyndale. We do have other districts that have more intensity, but I would have to defer to the planning manager, Markergard, to provide some of that history as to why B4 was landed on, other than the reasons stated within the retrofit plan. But... Are there any other nodes you mentioned, or you asked if there were any other nodes? Are you, are you referring to as like a model?
Well, we've got nodes identified in the retrofit plan, and so, what I want to, you know, kind of looking for is, can you, can you give me a guide post that I might utilize, you know, one of the other nodes that we're trying, we're trying to aim towards, you know, that I might say, okay, we're trying to go in this direction, and maybe there isn't one, right? I mean, but I'm just kind of, kind of curious about those two things.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, the two other nodes, 86th and 98th, those are probably the best guides that we have. If there's anything with, or, anything even off Lyndale that might be of a roadmap, I'm not really sure, but we're, we're just, we are modeling it off of the rezoning and the development around 98th and 86, and we're seeing that kind of energy at 94th and Lyndale. But as for the B4 zoning, I'll let Glenn talk.
Mayor Bussie, Councilmember Lohman, in terms of comparable nodes, certainly, France and Old Chocopee jumps to mind as one where at least three of the four corners have been developed under the B4 standards. So, a lot of what that does is require buildings close to the street, parking to the side or rear, and in terms of uses, probably the biggest change is that it allows residential, whereas B2 does not, and then it prohibits some of the more auto-oriented uses, such as car washes, or gas stations, auto repair. Those are probably the biggest differences.
If you could, could you go back? There was another map that showed the entire area, and I think encompassed the... Right, oop, you passed it. No, one more, one more. Now, where did it go now?
Oh, no. Okay, hold on. I'm going to go really slow.
There, that one, that's the one. That's the one. So, the thing that caught my eye on this one, and maybe it's just the way I'm looking at it, is the guided land use of right-of-way, the train track through there, and then to have it actually officially zoned under, you know, the zoning. How does that, how does that railroad right-of-way, I mean, which literally bisects a good chunk of the work that we're trying to accomplish on Lyndale Avenue and over there, how do we, how do we deal with that? How do we work either around, or with, or through that, I mean, it cuts the, it cuts the parcels right in half? Big theoretical question for you, Glenn. What you got? It's a...
Mayor Bussie, certainly, it's both amenity for the area in terms of the industrial uses and the advantage that they take of that railroad line, but it also creates problems in terms of noise, although it's not a very busy line, and certainly, as you mentioned, kind of bisecting some parcels. Yeah, it, in some of our comprehensive plan documents, I mean, there's the long-range, super-long-range vision that maybe it becomes either rails-to-trails at some point in the future, or transit corridor. However, we think that's very, very far out. Industrial area is very strong, and certainly utilizes that rail corridor quite a bit. So, I think it's here for quite a few decades yet.
And I'm afraid you're right. I think it's, I've always loved the idea of the rails-to-trails to connect the entire city, basically, right through the middle of it, to have a biking and walking trail through the middle of the city, as opposed to railroad tracks, I think, would be fantastic, but I agree, we're, we're a few years out on that, more than a few years out. So... Council, additional questions, comments on this? Hearing none. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for the presentation. Council, I would, if we do not have any additional comments on that, I look for action on item 4.2 this evening.
Happy to make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Yeah. I will move to adopt a resolution initiating rezoning of parcels located at the northeast corner of Lyndale Avenue and West 94th Street, as depicted in the resolution, from B2 to B4.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to initiate the rezoning of parcels located in the northwest corner of Lyndale Avenue and West 94th Street, as depicted. No further council discussion on this? Ms. Mercer.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Councilmember Carter.
Aye.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Lohman.
Aye.
Councilmember Mua.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. We will move on to item 5 on our agenda, our organizational business. We have three study items, again, as I mentioned earlier, all planning-related. We're meeting most of the planning staff tonight, I think. This first one, item 5.1, is the environmental standards review for low-density residential. Michelle Lincoln from our planning staff is with us. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am pleased to present my work to you about the environmental standards review. Just going to share my screen. There we go. As you may have seen in the staff report, there's kind of a lot to cover, so in the interest of time, I may be moving quickly, but I will definitely leave room to, for more discussion and questions at the end, so we can go and revisit things in more detail after the presentation. So, I'll be going through a little bit of my background and methodology of the project. I will go over the natural features and environmental land use standards, focusing primarily on high-level details about the feature themselves, and then also just focusing on the recommendations that came from Planning Commission and staff, and then there will be a time for summary and questions at the end. So, this developed from considerations of the single and two-family amendments adopted in May of last year, and then they were added to the 2023 Planning Commission work plan after that. Initially, there were four items, the projects to review, and the three that ended up in the report are trees, slopes, and wildlife and habitat. Native and natural landscaping is being developed in detail with Public Works and the Sustainability Commission. So, those, discussion around those topics will be coming later. So, to conduct the standards review, I consulted multiple resources and research, looked at sister cities, conducted some public engagement, and also performed some Bloomington-specific analysis and mapping. So, this is the methods that I took in order to get to the report and presentation that I'm giving to you today. This is a recreation of Table 1 in the report. This is just to kind of show the different interventions that the city uses in order to protect our environmental features. This covers 18. This is not exhaustive. Some of these are broad topics, so there's even more specific interventions under each of them. The city has a fairly comprehensive planning, or, excuse me, interventions for environmental features for low-density residential and beyond. So, in reviewing these, in these items, I will be asking for direction when getting in these specifics from the council on which direction we should go next for these, and which would eventually go to code amendments, public hearing, or further study. So, here's the city code review with the three items. We have tree preservation, steep-slope protections, and wildlife and habitat. All cities that I reviewed had some sort of specific tree preservation requirements that cover things like removal, reforestation, and protection of significant trees or important trees. These is pretty common because our tree canopy is one of the most important features to help with things like urban heat island, stormwater runoff, biodiversity, our trees, and are just, are really important anywhere on earth. But so, you can see that represented in the city code. Also, with steep slope protections, I noticed that, you may notice that Bloomington is the only one indicated there. All cities have soil erosion and sedimentation controls. Bloomington has a very specific steep slope protection section, which wasn't present in the other cities reviewed. For wildlife and habitat, it's a pretty uncommon topic to end up in city codes currently. We have a non-residential conservation district. Burnsville does as well. St. Paul has RL, which is a residential district that does identify wildlife and habitat protection as part of its, its characteristics, amongst a list of other characteristics, but wildlife and habitat were specifically mentioned there. So, this is the summary from, of the recommendations, and I've color-coded it to indicate the discussion from Planning Commission. The things identified in green had majority support from the Planning Commission, and as well as from staff. Those in yellow had no majority from the Planning Commission, but had staff recommendation, and then the, those in red have no majority support and were not recommended by the Planning Commission. So, I will be taking you through the green and yellow items. So, for trees, we have just text cleanup with no regulation changes. This just makes the code easier to engage with, both as staff and as potential users of the code, whether that's residents or developers. For instance, this is the significant tree definition. As you can see, it's kind of a block of text. I present an option for amendment, which would be either changing the definition of significant tree, and then amending it with a table, and that kind of breaks down exactly what we mean by significant tree. What are we actually regulating? What are we, what are our metrics that we're using in order to implement our regulations? Another text cleanup would be, tree protective fencing is required before the issuance of grading or building permits. Here, it's kind of unclear. It makes it seem like all grading and building permits need to have this protective fencing installed, but it's actually only when tree preservation standards are triggered. So, we would amend the text in order to make it more clear that this is not applied to all grading and building permits. It's actually in a specific, a specific instance. So, the benefits of making this change are improved readability, as I said. There's likely no new equity impacts, because we wouldn't actually be changing regulation. Current equity impacts could be studied, but we wouldn't be incurring new impacts based on these changes, and we would likely need no further study in order to support these changes. Challenges is simply staff time and resources to make these changes, which are fairly low, and then also just making sure we align definitions and language across the code, once we make those types of cleanup changes. So, for wildlife, we also had one recommendation. Here, I am showing the wildlife corridor map that comes from the Minnesota DNR Wildlife Action Plan. This plan is considered a high-level document. It doesn't get as granular, as parcel-by-parcel for analysis. There's also not any planning or land use objectives involved in this plan, which makes it difficult to understand the alignment between this plan and land use standards. And so, but in order to represent kind of what's inside of the wildlife corridor, we have, those in yellow are kind of our public lands, so parks and other open space, and then also, those in pink are low-density residential, and then the remaining areas are things like water bodies, or land that is not Bloomington-specific public land, so it could be managed by the regional authority, or other private land managers that have open space there. So, the recommendation would use the wildlife corridor in order to provide wildlife and habitat education for low-density residential properties. This would be distributed to properties within that. This could be via the Bloomington briefing, so it would be citywide. We could capture some additional benefit if others also take advantage of the information that we provide. It also can be adapted to social media, other kind of ways to engage with people, which also could be a great way for various events with community engagement to provide that information, once we've kind of consolidated it together in material. And then, like I said, it could be a low-cost method by using avenues that we already use to communicate with our residents. So, the benefits is that it can be cost-effective, depending on the methods that we choose to distribute this information. It's opt-in, so if there's impacts that could have a financial component, like installing different landscaping, or using different fencing types, the residents can determine their own capacity to implement changes, which could alleviate some of the burden that a requirement for some of these changes could bring. And also, the resources are likely already available, especially like the University of Minnesota has extensive information that we can tap into in order to produce our materials. Challenges are that we would need to find the lead responsible department. Planning Commission mentioned that the Sustainability Commission could be a likely lead for these materials. We did try to have a formal meeting with them. Scheduling didn't work out to have that meeting, so that work to connect and collaborate with them would still need to be done. Also, the time, resources, and data could be cross-prohibitive, but if we choose a scope for that, those materials, that can be easily managed. And also, effectiveness could be, can be unpredictable, and we may not see results in the short term, but in the long term, we could see kind of changing of the norms in order to implement some of the education items that we choose. So, in slopes, these are the items that had no majority from the Planning Commission, but as staff, we recommend. This is refining and adding the definition of steep slopes to the code. Currently, in our steep slopes section, 19.57.01, we don't actually have a definition of steep slope. It can be really difficult to implement a regulation or a metric if we haven't defined it yet, so that's the reason why I've included this in the presentation. Cities can have some discretion on what steep slope is, so I've identified three areas that could give guidance there. So, state statute defines steep slope as 12% to 18%. The US Department of Agriculture uses 15% or greater as steep slope, and our bluff protection overlay district, which is already being implemented, or has been adopted, defines steep slope as 18% or greater. So, there's some discretion there that we can choose to go with, but we would have... we would have justification by going in these directions and using that discretion discretion, excuse me. So and to kind of understand how those how that definition could impact the current landscape. Here we have average slope of twelve percent or greater, which is what the current code currently regulates, although doesn't define a steep slope, but it currently regulates. There's a little over fourteen hundred properties, low-density residential properties, that would be impact impacted. And this is outside of the bluff protection district. They have their own specific regulations for slopes. If we were to uh implement a definition of average slope is eighteen percent or greater, that would have an impact on three hundred, a little over three hundred properties. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't regulate slopes less than eighteen percent. It just means we are identifying that steep slope is this percentage. Um, and then could pave the way for additional regulations, or we could leave it at the definition. It would just add, it would still add good clarity, um, but we wouldn't have maybe specific requirements with it quite yet. But it lays the foundation for that. Um, so the benefits is more clarity, um, and it would allow us to actually monitor, evaluate, and regulate the applicate applicable parcels. Um, and further in-depth study is not likely not required based on the examples from the state and federal level as well as information that we already have within our code. Uh, challenges with making sure we have alignment, which can be very uh easily done through a quick review. And it doesn't include any change to regulations on what we would do with steep slopes. So if we wanted to add those, that would be a separate project we would have to do after making these changes. So the second steep slope recommendation uh or option is uh adding some steep slope best practices. Currently, we have a impervious surface limit for depending on the slope that's on the property, going from twelve to thirty percent slope. Um, and as you can see, the maximum cover is reduced as slope percentage increases. Um, some there's some special provisions that highlight trees and surface water redirection as possible requirements. Um, but it doesn't uh give as much flexibility that is currently in our slope or excuse me, our bluff protection overlay district um in consult consult with uh Public Works. Um, these are best management practices, which means we don't require them, but they are um uh options that the city um sees as beneficial or options that they could pursue um that the city kind of cosigns. Um, they would still need to go through approval with the city, so they couldn't just be like, I did, I did, I covered my bare soil. We're good. They would actually have to present a plan that that says that they've done this in order to actually mitigate um the surface water runoff or soap stabilization. Um, but this just kind of says it more forward uh that if you want to engage with steep slope protection, here are some options. And this is uh this is directly from the bluff overlay protector district, and the strike through and underline underline are my changes. So the uh bluff protection overlay district standards were updated in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, so they are likely the most up-to-date that we have. Um, these best manager management pro uh practices can give flexibility to property owners and developers who need to manage their slopes on their property. Um, and like I said, it would still be reviewed by staff. Uh, challenge would be that not all the language is relevant citywide because of how unique the bluff is. Um, but I believe that adapt adaptations can be made uh and justified. So that was a very quick run-through of the recommendations from Planning Commission and staff. Um, I can also go in more in-depth than any of these items, not just the ones in green and yellow. Um, and so, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I am ready for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Lincoln. Appreciate it. Council, thoughts on this? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm, yeah, I'd love to have an understanding about why there isn't an interest in a tree preservation standards review right now, given we have a tree canopy problem, generally speaking, in the city of Bloomington. I would, I'd be happy to hear, you know, maybe that's because it's happening somewhere else or whatever, but I'd love to know why folks don't think that that might be valuable at this stage.
Thank you, Mayor and Council Councilmember DeLisandro. That's a great question. So tree preservation standards, um. Hold on, let me reframe a little bit, actually. So in thinking about our tree canopy and all the things that go into um having a healthy tree canopy, tree preservation is actually only one part of it. Um, earlier tonight, you heard about the urban forestry plan that's going on. Um, that's also part of maintain like or restoring or maintaining our tree canopy in order to have an inventory and a plan for our trees. Additionally, they are um uh Public Works and City Forestry are also working to really utilize our uh public row. Um, using our public row to plant trees is one of the best ways to get new trees into our canopy. Um, and so they are working on that as well. Um, the tree pres our tree preservation standards are actually fairly comprehensive, especially compared to other cities. And with the work that's being done with the um Public Works to add more trees to our canopy, um, those in tandem make a kind of are are working towards having that like tree canopy of our dreams.
Okay, if I if I can sum up, if that's all right. Um, so what I'm hearing you say, and it makes sense to me, I think, is um, there's no need for the uh for us to do anything in this area of uh of policy or code because we have these other activities and you feel that they're sufficient to provide what it is we're trying to accomplish if we were to go through some kind of tree preservation standards review.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro, that is correct. The they are really working together well. Um, and and our tree preservation standards are not a barrier or inhibitor to the work that the city forester is doing. Um, and also there are parts in our code that already prohibit the removal of trees in the row. Um, so the tree preservation standards wouldn't impact that. Um, additional tree preservation standards wouldn't impact the work that they're doing. It actually, it's already covered.
Okay, so there's there's no concern that we might find ourselves in in conflict? Like, let's say the urban forestry plan comes back and they make certain recommendations, and will that will would would that potentially trigger us to have to come back and make some policy changes here?
Without knowing the details of the urban forestry pan uh uh, excuse me, or urban forestry forestry plan, pardon me. Um, uh, that is something that I can't say for certain, not knowing the details, but the likelihood of that happening is very low.
Okay.
Um, and also, we were are can work in collaboration with them as they're working on their urban forestry plan. So we could be proactive about any changes we may make before the final plan is released.
Okay, thank you.
Others? Councilmember Nelson.
Thanks, Mayor. Hopefully two quick questions here. On the tree text cleanup portion of this, um, this is probably maybe for the city manager, uh, because it there was something about the uh building permits in there. And am I correct in understanding that we could condition a building permit on these tree rules um because that's outside of the actual building structure? Uh, we wouldn't be prohibited because we'd be exceeding building code in that manner because it's outside of the actual how you build the structure. Is that?
Ms. Manderscheid?
May remember, um, Nelson, if I understand your question, uh, is is the is the question whether we could use the building code to regulate trees? Is that?
My question is whether the building code prohibits us from doing that because we'd be exceeding the exceeding the building code, and that's a statewide uniform standard.
Ah. I don't know the answer to that question.
Fair enough.
Um, but I can definitely check it out and get back to you. I I don't want to guess.
Mr. Markergard.
Yes, Mayor Bosie, Councilmember Nelson. I believe you're referring to the interpretation and the state requirement that cities cannot have uh have ordinances or standards that exceed the building code. Our understanding of that is that it is limited to the structure itself and that anything outside the structure um is not bound by that limitation, so tree preservation, at least our interpretation, is it's not prohibited or restricted by the that state law.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I I thought I had seen it the same way, but just wanted to make sure. Um, my second question, so this deep slope, um, i- if we add that into there, that doesn't actually change anything for anybody in terms of how or what they can build. It just adds a a definition in there. If we wanted to actually change anything, we would need to come back and make subsequent decisions. Is that accurate?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, that is correct. This is um, so the section is actually called steep slopes, and then we don't define steep slopes. So I think this kind of brings that in a little bit into alignment where uh other adjustments could be, we call it slopes protection or slopes. But we would need to define steep slopes as a first step before we got into discussing what regulations or requirements we could have for steep slopes. So this is um providing some clarity on having a steep slope section and then being like, well, what is steep slopes? Um, so just kind of removing the ambiguity and then laying the foundation where if we wanted to provide additional regulations beyond the best practices or impervious surface recommendations that we provide, we're ready for that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the reason I bring that up is I remember when we did the bluff protection standards, um, that there were a number of concerns with people that have steep slopes in their backyards and that the rules did change for them. The areas that they thought they could build previously, they couldn't build, so I just want to make sure that we're understanding that if that was going to happen, we're going to change the rules for people. We'd have a very robust process for them to be informed about that, so thank you.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so when I look at the the proposal, I kind of just want to take a step back a little bit to the kind of the the purpose in the of the proposal here, and I kind of read read this piece here, the city is protecting our precious environmental assets while addressing the needs uh of its of its residents. And so, you know, you know, I kind of, so I'm curious about, you know, kind of the categories we got to for that. And then, you know, so I see trees, wildlife, habitat, slopes. And then, you know, I kind of think of, okay, so let's say we implement, you know, all of these different policies uh with respect to, you know, for trees, it's a little easier. Maybe with slopes, you can have a beginning process and an end process, and you could probably, you know, by some measure, measure that that difference, you know, in terms of those things. And I'm a little more um, you know, kind of concerned when I look at the the wildlife habitats. Let me start the first question. Uh, I won't throw a ton of questions on you at one time. How did we kind of get to these, well, three to four categories, because I'm going to get landscaping, you know, on the other piece here. Let's start there.
Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, thank you. Um, so these were the uh, these categories were chosen as a result of the single and two-family adoption. Um, and that I was not part of that process. Um, so when the project was added to the twenty twenty-three planning work or, excuse me, Plan Commission work plan, um, those that scope had already been defined um by the time that we got there, and I think that um Planning Manager Markergard um can provide additional details. Uh, my understanding is that those were questions that arose from uh public hearing and conversation around the single and two-family. Um, and so those were the topics that we um that I I explored as a result of that.
Thanks for the background and the reminder, you know, as to where this kind of came out of, and I just, you know, I just kind of wonder, this is more more commentary, you know, and not necessarily for your answer, certainly feel free if you want to. But I wonder if we were looking at this apart from that, you know, if we would pick these these, you know, these categories? Because I just um, I I wonder if this really, then I I kind of take a step back earlier in our meeting, we talked about our climate plan. Because I I keep wondering, are these really the things that are are really going to kind of make a difference to that that climate plan? And since we don't really have that in front of us, you know, we're we're kind of working from a from another piece, and so um, I I just struggle, you know, with with if, let's say, we did anything on this list, you know, other than the the trees and the slope piece, you know, how would we measure that as opposed to this this proposal here that we have here? So that's that's sort of where I I'm I'm kind of struggling with. Um, and if there's any guidance you can give me in terms of looking at this, you know, are these the categories? If you had a blank slate to to look at, would you would you suggest something else? I'm just, I I I'm not sure how to look at this.
Mayor and Councilmember uh Councilmember Lohman, that's a great question, I think, because our environment is literally a hundred percent of what's around us. So how do we choose categories? Um, so I think that um if you can think about other really big categories that kind of exist in environmental protections, we look at things like water quality, which we already have, like, we have our watersheds. Um, we have additional like stormwater requirements that kind of speak to that. Um, and um, so it's it's that's a category that also has had extensive study and review actually over time. Um, so that's why it may not necessarily come up, because it already has a lot of like regulation at different levels as well as um more up-to-date engagement. And I say up-to-date as in continuous engagement on stormwater and water quality. Um, and the watersheds um uh uh and in partnership and and the city in partnership with watersheds kind of handle things like stormwater and water quality. Um, and then also in looking at kind of like where planning can intervene, um, in those things as well can get kind of um, like, can narrow the scope of what you really look at. Um, if I had a blank slate, I mean, trees for me would one hundred percent be on there. I think that trees are one of the biggest indicators for equity. I mean, who has trees and who doesn't? Um, and the impact that not having trees to habitat, I mean, a lot of a lot of other features feed into wildlife and habitat um that make the biodiverse uh uh environment that we need for all of us to kind of thrive. Um, but in addition to that, they're great for stormwater and water quality. Their um their roots stabilize the soil. Um, they help with evaporation off their leaves. They provide shade uh to various species, including our own, um, and as well as mitigating heat island effect. So in air, we actually have an area in Bloomington uh in the southeast um that has uh, if you have seen the University of Minnesota Urban Urban Heat Island Study, you zoom into Bloomington, there's a really obvious area in East Bloomington uh that has a high uh urban heat island effect, which is kind of one things of like, ooh, that's that, to me, says we should look at it. What are the trees? What's the tree situation like there? Because very often, trees um can be a huge factor in mitigating that. Um, so I think trees is a very natural addition to this project and and kind of in review. Um, and the city is has a lot of different plans going on uh in order to help with the tree canopy, as I explained before. Um, as for slopes, uh slopes, we we have slopes. There are many areas in the United States that are pretty flat um or effectively flat. Um, but Bloomington does have a variety of slopes and hills and and not outside of the bluff. Um, and so I think having an addition here of looking at slopes was fairly natural as well. Um, I think it the issue comes, you know, a typical planning intervention is at plat and subdivision. Um, and there are some grading and soil erosion and sedimentation requirements, um, but enforcement uh beyond uh beyond those um interventions would uh have a lot of impacts on staff time and then the ability for people to use their properties, because it would require a lot of restrictions of not being on the slope at all. And and as you mentioned, you're familiar with the bluff protection overlay district and that discussion. And then wildlife and habitat is a fairly new kind of, um, I think for people to engage in very deliberately. Like I said, trees and slopes are habitat. Biodiversity is very helpful. Um, but LA, as I mentioned in the report, has been on a decade-long process of figuring out how to implement uh land use policy that supports wildlife and habitat. Um, and they're still not finished, but they took seven years with consultants to gather the data necessary in order to get to their draft ordinance. So I think to clear some of your confusion or or unsurety about like, what's next? What do we do with these categories that we've chosen? Um, it involves significantly more study, I think.
So let me just say this last thing here. Um, I get the trees, get the slope piece. I I think you could easily measure, you know, uh, measure those things. The habitat piece, so for example, we look at this green one here, the low-density residential properties and the educational piece. I don't know how you would, you know, know that you made an impact with that. I just don't know how you would measure that at the beginning, and then, let's say, ten years from now. I mean, I I think it's a good thing to do, but I don't know how you would measure that. And I just, you know, as you as we're looking at this proposal, so And I just, you know, as we're looking at this proposal, so, so for example, the thing that you mentioned, you know, I mean, that is a much more encompassing kind of thing that would, you know, you could definitely measure that, you know, the LA study. And so that, that's where I'm struggling with, is just the middle part. The other two, I'm kind of there, but I just, I can't make this make sense, the middle part. So, but thank you.
And I appreciate your comments, Councilmember, because that was, I was wondering also about the wildlife and habitat piece of this for a different reason. I think in our discussions about the single and two-family zoning changes, we talked quite a bit about wildlife and habitat and, and made a number of statements, I think, that we would look at different possibilities, how we could work this in and how this would work best within the, within the city. So it surprises me that both staff and Planning Commission, I mean, that some things that would seem to be, I mean, can I say low-hanging fruit when we're talking about wildlife and habitat? Low-hanging fruit of, you know, habitat supportive regulations and wildlife supportive policies that, without going to a full-blown Conservation Overlay District, but some supportive regulations or policies for wildlife and habitat, that they wouldn't be something that would be considered? Can, can you share a bit, what, the discussions at the staff level and perhaps at this Planning Commission level?
Mr. Mayor, yes. So the, a lot of what the wildlife and habitat is covered in other areas, like, to support habitat, having our native landscaping and, native and natural landscaping ordinance would be a habitat supportive regulation for low-density residential, or tree preservation or tree planting. Also, all of the great work that Parks and Rec and Public Works do in our public lands and parks, all are habitat supportive and, and kind of signifies things like connectivity is really important, connectivity of habitat is really important for wildlife. Having those multiple areas be addressed in these other places means that we are habitat supportive in, in, in those ways. There could be more habitat supportive things. The, I'm using LA as the example because they are kind of the, one of the cities that have done the most work in this area and provided an actual draft ordinance for all of us to look at. They did things like having setbacks for fences, having fences that had specific opacity so animals could move through them or under them. And they, that could be also seen as both habitat and wildlife supportive. I'm recognizing now, or, well, I'm recognizing the kind of enmeshment that doing wildlife supportive things, excuse me, or doing habitat supportive things are also wildlife supportive things. So there is kind of a, an entanglement there that you can't really separate. But I think that in Planning Commission's view, they were, they expressed kind of two main things, which was the simplicity of the code and the practicality of some of the recommend, some of the early recommendations that I got from my research, like changing fences or having different setbacks. And also in having habitat supportive regulations for, that are broad, you know, citywide, could create a lot of legal non-conformity depending on the direction that we go. If we expand the interventions that planning or the city interacts with these things, if a structure is in a right place, a shed's too close to the property line, or removing vegetation, there's also that component of it. So I think because of that complexity and because of the question of some of the practicality of it, in addition to how native landscaping, trees, slopes, and other things are already doing that, they had decided not to recommend it. And as staff, I agree. I think that we have, like, the landscaping supplemental policy, we have potential opportunities to add the educational materials for wildlife and habitat, we have our tree preservation as well as, like I said, the work that's being done for native landscaping on low-density residential specifically, that make these additional things pretty resource-intensive, and that could be an issue to consider.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Council, additional comments here? So this was, there's no form or motion or information here or action here, but did you get from our comments, from the council questions, what you were looking for as you continue to move this forward?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think that I am definitely grateful for the feedback and additional direction, but also I'm, the question is, is the current direction that we're heading in, in that I am pursuing the things in green and yellow, supported, or not, not wholesale, not wholesale, but in, in whole or in part supported, so that way I can focus our resources in a direction. Also, you know, there's always the opportunity for council or Planning Commission to revisit some of these items, so a priority, identifying some priority items is also acceptable.
And I think, my, my summary might be, given what you heard from the Planning Commission and then given what you've heard from the council tonight, I think you're probably headed in the right direction here.
Fantastic.
Or not. Councilmember De La Hora and then Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a quick clarification from my perspective on that. I, what I'm, what I, I would find with you all working towards the things that you've defined in green and yellow here, I would like us to consider, to your point, Mr. Mayor, some more habitat supportive regulation. And I understand that we think that that might be accommodated in part by the native landscaping work that we're doing. And so I'd like to just ensure that we have a bead on that from a planning perspective and that that come, I don't know when that's planning to come to us. I don't know, City Manager, if you know when that's coming? Okay. But I would like to, I don't, I don't disagree that each, each of us in our own backyards can do a lot from a native landscaping perspective to provide the habitat that folks need. But we, we also, we also have to seriously just understand that wildlife and habitat, like, it doesn't move according to our rules, right? It doesn't. It doesn't use, our, our boundaries are arbitrary to them. If, if, if I'm a deer and I'm in Highland and I want to go to Moyer Park, I'm going to go how I want to. Like, I'm not going to follow this nice little line that we've defined as right around the creek, right? And said, everything else can be developed and who cares and cut it up and, and whatever. It just doesn't work that way. So if, if we're going to decide as a planning department that we don't want to provide some flexibility in these areas of value for habitat and, and support that with landscaping and trees and other things like that, then, then that's a decision we make. I would not be supportive of that decision, is my point. When I look at the, the Conservation Corridor, I look at a, a large swath of Bloomington. It's not just West Bloomington, it includes the entire bluff areas of East Bloomington as well and everything. So it's a very big piece of our city, and it feels to me like it's an asset that deserves more protection. And that's how I've, that's the lens through which I look at all of this. So this is a fine start to the process. I, I would like us to keep an eye on the Urban Forestry Plan and the Native Landscaping Plan as ways and, and have a bead on whether or not we need to do more from a planning perspective to support those. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. In general, I support these. The one area, the steep slopes, if we're not going to go any further with it, I wouldn't spend the time on doing something that's not actually going to change anything, just my personal opinion. But the question that I, that I really have is, you know, this seems to dovetail very nicely with our Sustainability Commission. Is there a plan to work with them as well on this? Because these are many of the issues that they're working on directly.
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, yes. There's already conversation with Emma Strauss about this. We were just not able to formally meet prior to this meeting, but discussions, they, they know about this project. I was briefly actually involved in the beginning of the native landscaping, so there, that team is also aware that I was doing this work, so that partnership will continue in, in crafting these things. I think the hope is that if leading to code amendments or education, that we are laying the foundation or not countering the work that they're trying to do. So this doesn't necessarily eliminate further changes coming in the future to these areas as we adapt and create our climate action plan, which typically those plans can take some time. But I think this is, the, the recommendations that I have on the screen here are laying good groundwork for those things to be built on in what planning is doing and the city is doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because I do think this is an area that many homeowners are struggling with. They may have a number of trees that are infested, they're going to have to come out. And, you know, candidly, what I've seen a lot in my neighborhood is just get rid of all the trees then. It's the easiest solution. It's, it's the least expensive ultimately than trying to pick, take that tree out and that tree out. And it's probably the outcome we aren't looking for. And so providing assistance and resources and guidance to residents and businesses that are facing that situation, I think, is important. So thank you for working with them, because I see that they're working in, in a similar direction. So thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, just real quick, I know we got three more.
Councilmember Loman, yep.
I'll be quick here. So just respect with the wildlife and the habitat, I think, Mayor, you've stated it well. In my mind, can you split those two out somehow, look at them differently? I just think that what we have here, this one piece here is not, not sufficient. I'd like to see something more than what we have here.
Mayor and Councilmember Loman, can you explain which items that you're saying to split out?
So with, with the wildlife and the habitat, in my mind, I'm wondering if you divide those up and look at them differently, you know, separately, does that yield different results? Maybe not. But then also, as I look at that category that's currently right now, that one item that there's in green, that isn't sufficient enough, you know, to, to meet what I think what, at least this council member's looking for when I look at them, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second study item of the evening. Back to Mr. Ramler Olson. And this is our RS1 zoning district review.
I am back. It's so much easier. Okay. Yeah. So another study item. This one looking at the RS1 district, discussing the district broadly and then focusing on some of the development standards as well as the purpose statement for RS1, bulk standards, environmental standards, and allowed uses. This, this is a 16-page report, so I'm going to try to be as fast as I can. Ultimately, what we're looking for is guidance on the changes to the RS1 standards that were recommended by the Planning Commission, and that will help us determine what to bring forward for public hearing at a later date. So just the recommendations is really appreciated. As a review, this is the, you know, the, the assemblage of RS1 lots within the city right now. We split it up into four different areas, and between those four, that's 116 lots. We have Forest Haven in the north, just south of that, Greenbrier, and then even further south of that, Timberglade, and then a couple of lots. All of these are west of Normandale Boulevard. RS1 intent is to provide locations for large lots, single-family development in areas of steep slopes, significant vegetation, wetlands, or in areas substantially developed as large lots in order to preserve the character of the area and protect natural resources and ensure compatible development through appropriate development standards. Some RS1 standards to, to notice or, or displayed in this table right now. The big one is the lot area. That's the one that was covered a lot within the staff report and within our analysis. So the current minimum lot area is 33,000 square feet. Some other lots, standards are below that, or RS1 standards are below that, but nonetheless, that's, that's a big one to pay attention to. There we go. So splitting it up between what's recommended and what's not, I'll go through what's not really quickly. And by the way, recommendations from Planning Commission are to be more specific. So not recommended is changing the intro language to the RS1's intent statement, I just went through that. They were not, they did not recommend lowering the RS1 minimum lot area from 33,000 square feet. They were not in favor of removing consideration of median lot width within RS1. That's just a lot area standard, or a lot, lot standard in order to determine if it meets the RS1 intent. They weren't in favor of removing consideration of steep slopes in RS1. They were not in favor, or they also did not recommend adding a lot location within a conservation corridor as a characteristic RS1 lots. That was in response to some of the environmental concerns that were expressed last year during a discussion of R1 amendments. That was a, that was something that staff proposed, but they did not favor that. And they were not, they did not recommend removing consideration of prevailing setback of structures on RS1 lots. So again, just kind of getting into the nitty-gritty details of how we determine what an RS1 lot is. What they did recommend was updating some of the parts of the RS1 intense section. They were in favor, they also recommended allowing two-family dwellings as a permitted use, as well as allowing groupings of two-family dwellings within RS1. They recommended prohibiting institutional-related uses in RS1. It was not conceived of as an institution district or institutional district, that was for others. So RS1 should be free of that type of use. And they also recommended using criteria that were developed by staff that would be, it would be consistent, and they would be used to evaluate any sort of requests for rezoning to RS1. So I'll go through those in a little bit more detail. Yeah, this comparison of the current intent statement and what staff has drafted based on the feedback from Planning Commission. You'll notice that, so at, at the beginning, we are recommending that there be a minimum of two of the following characteristics. Currently, there is just an or qualifier in that intent statement, which means that any one characteristic would qualify as an RS1 lot or a lot that could be located in the RS1 district, but we're advocating that, or not advocating, sorry, we are offering to you that multiple characteristics be considered. So steep slopes, significant natural and native vegetation, wetlands, or substantially developed as a large lot. So something to consider, and that we'd really appreciate your feedback on. Additional and, additional uses in those that could be removed. So as mentioned previously, we, we are putting before you tonight allowing two-family and groupings of two-family dwellings in RS1. We feel that that's an appropriate move because it advances the city's goal to add more housing and to add even more housing diversity to the, the stock. It would be consistent with the comp plan. Right now, R1, the R1, or, sorry, all RS1 lots are guided low-density residential. Within that land use category is allowed two-family dwellings. So we feel this brings our zoning in consistency with, in, or makes it consistent or consonant with the comp plan. It's not inherently inconsistent with RS1 regarding resource protection. You can design two-family dwellings to be sensitive to those features that exist on RS1 lots, so that's another reason we feel it's appropriate to consider it. And just as a background, when we say groupings of two-family dwellings, we mean a minimum of two-family dwellings within 500 feet of each other. That's what's considered a grouping of two-family dwellings, if there's any confusion. As for removal of the institutional uses, I provide those below. If you'd like more detail on that, I can certainly offer that, but those are related to institutional uses, and we feel that they're not appropriate for the RS1 district, so proposing to have those removed. So rezoning recommendations, we are not coming forward and making any rezoning recommendations. We're not recommending any wild, wide-scale rezoning. That would be pretty burdensome on staff, it'd be hard to do, it might create a lot of confusion with residents, so we're not coming forward with that recommendation tonight. But we are proposing five criteria by which to assess rezoning requests, consistency with the RS1 intent, the level of conformity with RS1 standards. So again, evaluating a group of lots and to see if, if, well, I'm But we are proposing five criteria by which to assess rezoning requests, consistency with the RS1 intent, the level of conformity with RS1 standards, so again, evaluating a group of lots and to see if, well, I mean, the level of conformity would be determined by City Council, or the reviewing bodies, but nonetheless, offering that as a criterion, the scale of rezoning action, so how many lots are being proposed for rezoning. We prefer continuity and contiguity, so that gets to the fourth criterion as well, and the proportion of neighborhood support. Again, what the proportion is, or what the acceptable proportion is, we leave that to you, but nonetheless, we feel that it's important to have that sort of support for that action, instead of a minority speaking for a group of lots, want to make sure that it is a more democratic proposal. Next steps for this item is, based on this, based on this study session, drafting ordinance amendments, getting the feedback from you all to incorporate that into those proposed amendments. We'll be doing some engagement about some, concerning the proposed amendments with residents of RS1 lots, updating our Let's Talk Bloomington page and sending out letters, just informing them, letting them know that there'll be a public hearing coming up, and just making a special effort to reach those residents specifically. And then, public hearings most likely in April and May of this year. So, again, just to emphasize or to remind, we are trying to get, you know, a direction from you all based on those Planning Commission recommendations, I leave those up there for your review and reference. If you'd like to talk about some of the options that were not recommended by Planning Commission, I'm happy to do that, but figured it best to, if we focus on what's being recommended by Planning Commission. But nonetheless, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ramler Olson. Councilmember De La Sando, and then Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. Did you, you had mentioned you were going to go through the five consistent criteria. Can you show them to me again?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember. There we go.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's fine. Okay, so go ahead and go back to it. I tend to not have any problem with the recommendations that you're making, although the groupings thing is a little weird to me, especially in line with the not recommendation to reduce the lot size, which seemed to be a big part of what we were trying to accomplish before, and so I'm kind of confused as to like the pitch here. But I actually think, so my biggest thing here is that I, this notion that we don't have a, have, the RS1 is not used very often, and it is intended to be setting aside properties, I don't care if they were 6,000 square feet, like, it wouldn't matter to me, right? So, my point is, I'm not going to, like, worry about the lot size. What I care about is its location, its environmental characteristics and things like that, which is what the original intent was, even though lots of people believe that maybe that wasn't what the intent was. Fine. I care that this, this conservation corridor thing means a lot, I think, to a lot of people, especially people who live in the area, that purchased property in that area, in part because they got the benefit of being in a conservation corridor and therefore get to, you know, coexist with wildlife and habitat and things of that nature. It surprises me that we don't want to use that as a means by which to frankly, limit, in a good way, the number of properties in Bloomington that could be classified this way, right? So, we want this to be an area of significant environmental value, and it seems to me having a conservation corridor, you know, a property within that would give us a very easy way to say it is or isn't eligible for RS1 zoning because it is either in there or it's not, and we know what that looks like. So, I'm kind of surprised that that's not something people want to consider. The RS1 intent section looked good to me, the two-family dwellings thing is fine, we already allow it, we might as well just make it okay. The institutional stuff that you changed in the criteria is great, so I don't necessarily have any problem with the recommendations, as much as I am surprised that we're not going to lean into, if you will, the notion of that environmental impact and assessment by actually providing something in the characteristics of the zoning code to give us that information, because it seems like an easy one to do, and without it, you end up with, you know, he said, she said kind of conversations about whether it is or isn't environmentally significant. Nailing it within a conservation corridor seems like an easy way to say everybody agrees because, you know, that comes from the DNR or whatever. So, that's my input right now. I think you did a nice bit of work here, but I know, I know people will care to have, people especially who live in that corridor, who contact me, want to see us, you know, understand that this RS1 district is intended for that purpose, and that's the priority. The size of the lot, I know everybody thinks that's what it is, and it's all about West Bloomington and like big lots, whatever. If you told me that you wanted to change the minimum lot size in RS1 to 7,800 square feet, I wouldn't argue at this point, because I don't think that's the purpose of this zone. I think the purpose of this zone is to provide a higher standard of environmental and habitat protection than the regular R1 district. Unless I'm wrong, but that seems to be what it says, so that's my take at this stage. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson. I'm kind of thinking differently after, after listening to your comments a little bit about this, so let me just ask another question on the side here. I was interested with the idea that the R1, with institutions not being allowed in that, you know, how does that work in the R1? So, for example, I know we've got some, if I remember right, nursing homes in there, and some other types of uses there, so how does that, I guess I'm trying to understand why that recommendation was made. Is this going to be somehow different? And so, for example, I mean, I've got, you know, in other places that are close, got, you know, homes for folks who've got disabilities and that type of thing, so would that not be allowed in this RS1?
Mayor, Councilmember, I don't have the, don't have the use table off the top of my head. I believe we do have a broader use category of institution-related uses. Institutions can also refer to school campuses, schools, I mean, if that would be appropriate in RS1. My understanding of the history of that district, or of the RS1 district, is that those uses were not intended for RS1. You will see them permitted in one fashion or another within the other residential districts, but RS1 was excluded from those, I'm guessing because of, perhaps getting to Councilmember De La Sando's point about it, the history being of large lots and environmental resource protection, and that being incongruent with establishing institutional uses within that district.
Yeah, I just, I'd like us to look into more of that, because I wouldn't want to be discriminating against certain folks, you know, who, for example, have disabilities and would benefit from having those types of facilities and being able to take advantage of nature or natural resources that are there. So, I hope we'd have another look at that. So, since secondarily moving along here quickly, I've just got, you know, four quick things here, Mayor, I know we've got more items on the list here. Is that I, when I saw the conservation corridor piece being lopped off of that, that raised all sorts of alarm bells for me, because I thought the very intent of what we're trying to do is around natural resource protection. And so, if that's offered as an opportunity, that should be included if we're going to make this as a separate zone. So, that made me go, hmm, I'm not sure, that kind of leads me to believe that this really is something that we're trying to protect lot sizes in our more western parts of our city. So, that's just one piece as I look at that, that doesn't really fit with the narrative here. And then, and this is the piece where I, you know, in terms of what the previous council member said, that kind of made me think a little bit more in terms of, as I thought about, what if we were to offer another zoning district that allowed that lower level of folks, because I'm not sure, I'm interested in reducing that 33, but, you know, and I'll just state it this way, I'm kind of changing my mind, but I want to just put this out as I had written it, but what if we offered another zone that went down to that 22,000, that said that you had to do all four items that you listed on your RS1 piece, and then we'd make it more like the R1? So, I would be open to something like that, or maybe bringing the other standard down to the 22, and then also putting that requirement on it as well. And then finally, as I look at those consistency pieces, or those five items that you had listed there in terms of the standards, the one thing that troubles me that I can't get around is how these things do tend to be concentrated in certain parts of the city. And so, I think that we would have to address that concentration of where these things are located. R1 is located, you know, pretty much all the way across the city, and so, whatever changes that need to be made, if we do intend to continue to have RS1, in this council member's opinion, we're going to need to make it more uniform across the city. If it really is indeed the intent of it, to have a natural resources bend, or some type of environmental component of it, otherwise, it just doesn't, it just, to me, doesn't make sense in terms of what we're advocating for. So, thank you, great work that you've done here, but those are my four, either recommendations or concerns.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question will be straightforward and direct, then I'll have other questions. Was it considered to just remove RS1 zoning altogether and just put everything under R1? There's only 116 lots out of 20-some thousand single-family lots. Just my opinion, it hasn't worked. And we've demonstrated that R1 does all these other things, I mean, most of these places that we're talking about that have wetlands, steep slopes, trees, wildlife, exist in R1 zoning. If that's truly the goal of this, we've demonstrated we don't need it. So, was it considered to just eliminate this zoning completely and just go to R1, the uses, single-family homes?
Mayor, Councilmember, no, it wasn't considered. I don't believe that was the direction we received, and so we didn't want to entertain that. Of course, we're happy to get your feedback to see if that is a palatable consideration amongst you all, if that's something we should explore. But, yeah, no, that wasn't something we had thought of. Although, I mean, I guess I should say that, I mean, in reference to Planner Michelle Lincoln's presentation, having these standards broadly applicable might speak to what you're talking about, if we have these standards that are looking at steep slopes, wetlands, based, you know, no matter the zoning district, perhaps, maybe it doesn't matter if there's a distinction between RS1 and R1. I mean, the most overriding distinction is the lot size, is preserving large lots and a large lot character. If we have the tools and the resources and the standards in place to protect natural resources, and we're not concerned about lot size, then maybe RS1 is superfluous. But that's, maybe I'm speaking too much off the cuff, actually. So, I'm not going to, yeah, I will, I'm happy to take your direction on what we should consider.
Thank you, and I appreciate the candor on the answer on why, and second, I think you said it way more eloquently than I could. I think that's exactly what we should do, is look at those other standards. One of the concerns that I have about this specific recommendation is to do the two-family as opposed to allowing a smaller lot size to split. I mean, so basically, by this policy, we would be encouraging duplexes at the expense of single-family homes. Instead of having two single-family homes, we would encourage to have a duplex, and one of the things that we've talked a lot about is ownership opportunities. Duplex, you can certainly be, you know, own each side of that, but they do tend to be a higher percentage of rental. And so, would, do you see that, that that would be an impact if we are encouraging two-family dwellings as opposed to allowing a split and having two single-family dwellings?
Mayor, Councilmember, I should have mentioned this during the presentation, that it's not only just the building of new duplexes, but it's actually retaining existing structures and just subdividing within. So, you could have what is, from all intents and purposes, from the outside, a single-family home, but it's actually two addresses, there's two dwellings within that. So, what we're proposing would actually allow that to occur, although if someone wanted to tear it down and rebuild a duplex, I mean, with what we're, what's being recommended, that's another scenario in which that could happen. There was an analysis, I'm going to have to dig through some slides, so I apologize if you'll indulge me. So, that's not it. So, we looked at potential subdivisions within current RS1 lots, based on some criteria, looking at it under existing criteria of the minimum lot area, 33,000 square feet. If, in order to subdivide, you'd have to have 66,000 square feet. There's a lot of caveats to this analysis. We, it was, if you remember, there's so many disclaimers because, you know, staff only has so many time and tools to, in order to do these analyses, and you'd probably get more, something, something way more accurate from a licensed surveyor, but nonetheless, we tried our best, and under existing standards, out of the, we didn't look at all, there were those two lots at the very south, along Timberglade, that were excluded from this, but looking at the other three areas, out of 114 lots, only two lots we saw were potentially subdivitable. So, you get, you get some more housing units out of that. If we dropped that minimum lot area to 22,000 square feet, that raises to 10. Now, this doesn't include also the financial wisdom of such a decision, so we applied that constraint to the analysis, and when we stuck to the current lot area standards, we only found one lot was potentially subdivitable. When we lowered the minimum lot area to 22,000 square feet, three lots. So, this gives you some idea of what the development potential is of current RS1 lots under existing and potential lot areas, and it's not much. So, some of these options before you might not yield a lot of development activity anyways, so take that for whatever it's worth.
Thank you, Mayor, if I might, just a couple more. So, if we, if we have this RS1 zoning, and we have a process by which a neighborhood could come forward, and they all agreed to do that, and they would need to meet some sort of steep slope or wetland or something like that, according to the presentation that we saw for 5.1, almost the entirety of steep slope lots not included on the bluff or in West Bloomington. So, a neighborhood, including my own neighborhood that has a number of steep slopes, could come in and ask for that, could get rezoned to RS1, and could effectively circumvent the R1 zoning changes that we made, because the lot size would change to 33,000, so no one could do any of the things that we did in the R1, but only in West Bloomington, only if they happen to have steep slopes or be near water. I mean, this seems like an enormous loophole for some neighborhoods to just say, you know what, we don't want to have that same zoning as everybody else. I don't know if there's a question in there? That's probably a statement. And that's frankly, one of my biggest concerns, is this is driving a truck through our R1 zoning changes, but only for part of our community. So, let me see, I think I had another question here. That'll be it for now. I just, personally, I don't believe in the zoning, I think I've made that clear, I think I made it clear tonight and previously, and I don't mean it personally or anything like that, I just, I completely agree with Councilmember De La Sando that these things are important, and if what we want to do is protect these, let's protect these things. Let's look at steep slopes, let's look at what more we can do on trees, let's look at what more we can do on wetlands, if we need to do more on wetlands, although that state, let's do those things. The lot size, this seems entirely about having large lots, and I see that because I know the ones, Timberglade's in mine, right next to it, along the wetland, is our R1 zoning on the east side of that same wetland. So, R1 zoning is perfectly fine next to this wetland, except where you want to have a large lot. The two lots on Normandale make absolutely no sense to me why they're RS1. I mean, they're adjacent to a townhome complex, adjacent to a gas station and a liquor store. You know, they just happen to be large lots, so. You know, they just happen to be large lots. So.
Councilmember Rivas, and then Councilmember Alessandro. Councilmember Rivas.
Sorry. As you all know, I am new. I don't know anything. I'm just learning, trying to absorb as much as I can. But I do have a question for you. What is the purpose and intent of this RS1 zoning? I mean, I, I have read a lot about it, but I don't quite understand what's the main purpose of it. I mean, I wanted to ask a lot of the questions that have already been asked. So all, all I want to know at this point is, what is it exactly for? What's the purpose of it?
Yes. Mayor, councilmember? Yeah, so this is the RS1 intent. The, the bigger feature is just preservation of large, single-family lots that exhibit certain environmental characteristics. Currently, it's steep slopes, significant vegetation, wetlands. So those are those environmental features that are considered part of, or well, as it's worded right now, it's, it could be one or the other. It could be an area that's large lot, but it's also has steep slopes. It's a large lot, it has significant vegetation. It's a large lot, or it has wetlands. So there's, you know, numerous, numerous permutations of what could define an RS1 lot. But those are some of the characteristics that the city has defined as being part of the RS1 district. And then the second part of that intent, protect natural resources, ensure compatible redevelopment. So that's, that's what it's for is, I mean, and it's similar to other communities that actually have a large lot district. So, sorry, I'm gonna go to another slide that I prepared. Okay, so we surveyed several peer communities and looked at their large lot standards, and also compared them to their smaller, single-family zoning districts. There's a lot of communities that have a large lot districts. Eden Prairie, for instance, has a large lot district with a minimum area of forty-four thousand square feet, you know, an acre in size. So it's, it's, I mean, that's, that's the defining feature, but I believe that's, my interpretation is that's motivation to identify those areas that don't want to be, or that the city doesn't want to heavily develop, because that might compromise the environmental integrity of the resources on that property. But I mean, maybe that's a little bit of speculation. But nonetheless, that's the same thing that's reflected in Bloomington and within that intense statement for RS1.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Councilmember Delisandro.
So thanks. I, I, I understand, Councilmember Nelson, I understand where you're coming from. We, we, you know, I, I think that, I think that it's reasonable to understand that larger lot sizes, whatever the reason behind them, enable more natural and environmental stability. The changes that we've made to the zone for RS, for R1, including the, the the options for additional impervial, impervious surfacing and all that kind of stuff, are antithetical to environmental controls and environmental support, right? We did all those things in R1 to enable densification of the neighborhoods. And I, and I get that, but I don't think that, I don't think we would actually be serving ourselves correctly if we said, okay, make everything R1, and then put all of those constraints on there, and then reactively find the places where we need to make exceptions. We already know, like, the, the, the city of Bloomington is from an ecological perspective and a geological perspective, is already set out. It, yes, the east side of Bloomington does not have slopes like the west side of Bloomington does. The east side of Bloomington does not have, does not have, you know, wetlands, although maybe it did fifty years ago, and we already screwed it up. But I'm open to, like, buying them all back and turning them back. God knows we need a park in the east Bloomington. So let's do that. You know, let's buy the farm and turn it into a park. I would be up for that like you would not believe, like, one hundred percent. So I am here for that. But I, but I think that it's, it, I, I struggle with policy that says, well, if it doesn't work for everyone, it shouldn't work for anyone. I struggle with that. And I, and I also struggle with the idea that when you look at the, the goals that we're trying to have from a climate mitigation perspective, we should be spending our time making more investment on the east side in these heat islands to get tree canopy back and all these other things. But I don't think we should do that at the, at the expense of the stuff we have on the west side, just because it happens to be on the west side. You know, I mean, it is, it is the topology of Bloomington. It's because we have a riverbed and a river valley, and like, that's just the facts. I would be down for restoring some of East Bloomington back to some of its cool, more ecologically sound and significant places, you know, environments. I'd be down for that. I would. I don't want to say, because we can't do that, we should go ahead and, like, make things bad for the west side, too. That's, and I don't, I do not mean to imply that that's what you said. I think that the unintended consequence of R1 everywhere, given the changes we've made, might in fact encourage some of that, especially around impermeable surfaces and other stuff like that, where, where we did basically say density at all costs in a lot of ways. So, thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Loman, and a reminder, councilmembers, we're, we're trying to get direction to staff here. And we will ultimately get to a, a hearing of some kind, but we just want to make sure that we get direction to staff in terms of what we would like to see here. And even our comments, all, all the comments are great, and I think that staff will take that back and work with it.
Thank you, Mayor. And that's sort of what I, you know, I, I hear exactly what Councilmember Delisandro was saying here, and I think there is there's something unique about this. And I don't, I'm not sure, you know, in terms of what I'm seeing here. It's not getting quite there. And so my question for staff would be, you know, if we were to drop the, you know, the, the requirement down to twenty-two thousand or something less than that, does that start to take in some of the east side of Bloomington? What number does that, that take? Because I know that on the southern part of my, of my district, there, there's certainly homes that, that would fit in that twenty-two thousand, or, you know, do you have any maps like that? And what I'll just say is, yeah, so that's interesting there. When you, when you look, go back to that map there, that, that is, that is an interesting map.
Sorry, Mayor, councilmember. So this is a map showing R1 lots that, and it does include some of the bluff lots, so maybe that, those ought to be, ought to have been excluded from this analysis. These are lots that are R1 that have a, an area of thirty-three thousand square feet and a lot frontage of sixty feet. Lot frontage is not the correct width measure by which we assess lots, but nonetheless, it was the best proxy measure we had available. So this is thirty-three thousand square feet, minimum lot area. And this is twenty-two thousand square feet, minimum lot area, just so you know.
So, you know, I, I think, you know, and I think if we look at, and what I, I ask folks to think about is that, you know, those folks who came before us took part of the city, and they preserved part of the city, you know, for natural resources to be able to do that. And I think that those same, same folks also looked at this, you know, this particular district, you know, and I'd be more inclined to think that that, that they didn't want to do that if, you know, they said, oh, we just want large lots, you know, but what they entrenched inside of that RS1 district was this idea around natural resources. And, and so this council member is looking at that and, and trying to figure out, I, I do think there is some distinctions. Now, I don't know what that is, what that number is, and that's where I'm troubled with, and trying to figure out how, how to make this work. And, and certainly, I'm not going to be able to support something that is only in the west side of Bloomington. But it's got to be greater than the west side of Bloomington, and it does need to fit in the corridors. I mean, that, that conservation corridor piece, that being outside of this, I cannot support that. If that is not included in here, then wow, I guess we are looking at R1 all across the city. But I do think there's something to what, what the council member Delisandro has said that I think we need to think about in terms of what we're leaving for future generations. And I think that, 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 we've got to be crafty and figure out how does that fit into the future. I certainly support the changes we made with R1. But I think we can do something unique here with this, this RS district and area. And I'm not satisfied with just, you know, just giving up and just turning it all across the city that way. I'm, I'm wanting to work to try to figure out a way in which we can make this work. So that, that's my, my thought about this.
Thank you, councilmember. It sounds to me like we, we're still cooking here, and which we are want to do, which this group is want to do. I, I would recommend that you take back the comments that you've heard this evening. I don't know that we're ready for primetime and ready for a a formal hearing on this yet, but I think maybe to, to try and continue working on this and try and figure out, maybe if there's a needle that could be threaded, that we could work through all of this. And it might be a, I, I understand it's kind of a tall task for you. I get that, and, but I appreciate the effort that you do put into it, because I think you could hear right now, if we, if we had a, if we had a an ordinance or in the public hearing in front of us right now, I don't know where we'd end up. So. Fair enough?
Mayor, City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final study item of the evening is item five point three. And this is a discussion of accessory dwelling units, fences, and window covering standards. I think back in December, I believe it was, Mr. Markergard, we had a conversation on these things, and I think there were some council questions and discussion, wanting a little bit more context around where we stood, how we got to where we are in terms of those three topics right now.
Yes. Mayor Bussey, councilmembers, council flagged three items for additional discussion back on December eighteenth, namely detached ADU or accessory dwelling unit placement standards, fence placement standards, and then window covering standards. So tonight, what I want to do is review each of these three standards, discuss the intent, and then receive council guidance on potential modifications, if any are desired. So the first standard we'll talk about is detached accessory dwelling unit placement. The current standard was adopted in 2022, and that was the point at which the council started allowing detached accessory dwelling units. There are two key provisions in terms of where you can place a detached accessory dwelling unit. First of all, the ADU must meet setback standards for the principal dwelling. In the R1 district, which is most of Bloomington, that would mean thirty feet from the street, thirty feet from a rear property line, and ten feet from either of the side property lines. Secondarily, another standard says that the ADU must not be closer to a street than the principal structure. That's the same standard that applies currently to sheds or detached garages in Bloomington. So if you think about a typical lot in Bloomington that's interior or internal lot, not a corner lot, there is not a reasonable viability to place the ADU anywhere but in the rear yard, because most lots do not have sufficient side setback or front setback to allow an ADU in that area. So there was not a lot of policy discussion when this came through in 2022 about alternatives. So what was adopted was to treat ADUs similar to sheds or detached garages in that regard. Couple of situations where there may be interest in having a accessory dwelling unit in the front yard. One would be a bluff lot. So we have a lot of bluff lots in Bloomington that have very high setbacks from the street. And universally, they have very steep slopes in the back of those lots. So it'd be, in many cases, very difficult to have a accessory dwelling unit in the rear. In some cases, there would be an opportunity on the side of the house, but there may be some desire to place an accessory dwelling unit in the front yard in a situation like the one shown here on the screen. Another situation where this may come into play is on a corner lot. In, in this case, I'm showing the city-owned corner lot at Eighty Second and Fremont. It's currently vacant, and if this were sold for development, let's say a developer wanted to provide both a house and an accessory dwelling unit, the current standards would require something like what you would see on the screen. The ADU would have to be set back from Fremont. Alternatively, a buyer may want to place the ADU on the other side, which would not be allowed today. A reason for that would be if they wanted to combine it with a garage, for example. In this case, access is not allowed to Eighty Second Street, so it would have to come off of Fremont, which would make it difficult to combine an ADU with a garage, and yet not have the ADU between the dwelling and Fremont Avenue. So basically, a front yard placement is not allowed, or placement between the primary structure and the street today. I'm open for any questions on that standard, or any direction on modifications that that you may want to see. If we did do modifications on that, we would do that with our missing metal housing study and ordinance that it's planned to come forward in, yet this year.
Thank you, Mr. Markergard. And I think one piece that you left out of this, I think what drove a lot of this conversation back in 2022 were the notion of the drop pods that were becoming more common in the Twin Cities. Basically, you know, small units, dwelling units, sitting in the, in the driveway, basically, is what it was. And I think that was driving, that drove a lot of the conversation that we had, this notion that, you know, to, we didn't want fish houses, basically, in the, in, in the front yard, in, in the driveway, and people living in them. And that's kind of where the conversation went. And so as we, as we had this, that really was the, the primary point we were making, I think, with not wanting to do this in the front, in the front yards of, of any units. Councilmember Delisandro?
Yeah, I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think, you know, I feel like this study item is like Lona's beefs from December. Oh, so thank you, Glenn and team. My, my only comment was exactly to Mr. Markergard's point, which was there are several properties, you know, could we, where, where the only place that you could put a, an accessory dwelling unit, for example, is in the front of the house because of the setback and, and the slope conditions and things like that. If that's something that we could do on a conditional basis, or if like it was a, you know, and a variance initiated by the, by the property owner or something like that, and we thought that, okay, we don't need to change the rules, but we might enable or allow for a variance on conditional basis, I think that probably would solve the problem, generally speaking. I just didn't, don't think that we knew if that was doable or not. I, I certainly agree, if I'm in a, you know, fairly traditional lot with a thirty-foot setback, having a, you know, seven hundred square foot ADU in the front of my yard is not the right answer, and certainly not in my driveway. Although people park their RVs and live in them. I'm just saying, like, they do. It's a happening, whether we like it or not. So, so the, so I guess from my perspective, the, 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 the question that I had was, is there a way, even if it's by exception, to accommodate if an individual would want to put an ADU in their front lot, because that is, number one, they have a large lot. Number two, they have, that's the space that they have available to do that. And, and, you know, would we consider that as an option, or would we just reject it outright?
And, and I guess I don't know. I, I don't know if, how practical it would be, maybe you could help Mr. Markergard or Mr. Verbrugge if, to, to set it up in such a way that each are reviewed, you know, they're, if they meet certain criteria, but they do have to come through planning commission and/or the city council for review. And I don't know if that's more work than it's worth. I don't know how many lots we'd be talking about that would, that this might apply to if, if it's not buildable, or an ADU is not possible in the back or the side yard, that kind of thing. I'm spitballing here, and I'm not sure what might be doable or not.
Yeah. Mayor Bussey and Councilmember Delisandro, one idea that jumps to mind is the possibility of a conditional use permit process to have a ADU in the front yard or between a primary structure and the street. And maybe there's certain standards that would have to be met, such as, you know, no viable alternatives that are co-compliant, and then that could trigger a, a review process.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think, you know, I think your, your two examples that you gave here are really good ones, right? One was, hey, there's this large space, it's up against a, a deep, steep One was, hey, there's this large space, it's up against a, a steep slope, that's the place they can put it. We want to encourage people to do that, can we find a way? The second one with the 82nd and Fremont is another great example of, you know, how that's, you know, from my point of view, that doesn't look that different, having it on one side of the house versus the other side of the house. And so if, if it doesn't bother anybody, and it's, again, something we want to encourage in terms of people using these as, as density building opportunities within the, within the, with the area, then I'd want to encourage that. There was one other thing about ADUs, but this is, this, we're talking about detached here, but I, and I don't see it come back up, but I'll bring it up on another ti, on another thing. But I, I'm, I think, I don't think that there needs to be modification as much as flexibility to enable like an, an, an initiated option. And, and if that would work, I, I think that would be something that we'd want to encourage in the cases that, I mean, who knows, we might only get 10 or 12 over the course of the next 10 years. But again, it's 10 or 12 houses that people have access to that they didn't have to before.
So perhaps bring back a, a conditional use permit possibility for us to consider?
We can do that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any, any else? You don't care? Like I said, this is gonna be all Lona, sorry.
Yeah, the, the next item has to do with privacy fence placement standards. Current standards were adopted in 2008. And then I'll explain the standard and then come back a little bit to the kind of purpose behind it. But as you can see, the, from the diagram on the right, again, a fairly typical rectangular lot in Bloomington. The area surrounded in the green line, basically, with, anywhere within that area, you can have up to a six-foot-tall privacy-style fence, so full, full privacy. So that's in the rear yard and the side yard. But then between the house and the street, you can have a fence, but it's limited to four feet in height and to more of an open style, so no more than 50% opaque. So that could represent like a chain link fence or split rail or picket-style fence that's more open in nature. And really, the purpose behind that standard, really twofold. First of all, the idea of crime prevention through environmental design or SEPTED, this idea of having eyes in the streets, natural surveillance, that, you know, a criminal would be more reluctant to engage in criminal activity if they felt like they were being observed than if they were not. So that's one side of how Bloomington got to the standard. The other side was a desire to maintain the open design character along streets. So that definitely played in as well. So then if we look at a corner lot situation, again, here, the full privacy fence up to six feet would be allowed, side and rear. But between the dwelling and the street, on both sides in this case, because it's a corner lot, only four-foot open-style fence would be allowed in those areas. One thing to point out in a corner lot situation is frequently what seems like the side lot to one resident, to their neighbor either across the street or adjacent to that neighbor, it seems like the front yard for them. So we frequently run into that situation where, you know, the front yard to one resident feels like a side yard to another. So here, we can see two corner lots with a different style of fencing. One is code compliant, the one on top, the more open-style fence, four feet in height. The bottom one, I'm sure legally non-conforming, it predated our ordinance, but there, you know, full privacy fence, it's probably six feet in height. So I guess that's a little overview on how we got to the standards that we have. Any, either questions on the standards or direction on modifications?
Questions, council? Councilmember DeLaSandro?
I told you, this is like Lona's List today. So I have, I have explicit examples of this, and maybe they were, you know, non, legally non-conforming because they came in before code or whatever, but I have two lots. One at 86 and Emerson and one at 86 and Dupont. They're the exact same house, they're built during the same timeframe, you know how that goes. They sit on a corner lot, so they have a front lot and they have a side lot. The house at 86 and Dupont has a six-foot fence, it almost looks exactly like the one in your picture here. 86 and Emerson, they were told they couldn't build a fence on their side lot. So I, I do have a specific question about corner lots and the utilization of corner lots when you talk about certain areas of the city, right? We consider 86th Street to be a fairly significant road. Emerson is not considered as a significant road, neither is Dupont, right? So you have the, more of an, a connector road, and then you have a neighborhood road. Is there a reason we wouldn't consider some options for privacy for side, for corner lots that have a side yard for which, on which that side yard is not on a collector or a major road? That, that's really the one thing I wanted us to ponder as a council, to enable folks to, you know, if they have young children or whatever, and that's their lot, that they can put some fencing, privacy fencing on their side lot that, that would, would work for, for them. Like I said, it, it has happened all over the neighborhoods, you can see them everywhere. And it's a little hard for me to justify, when I go to talk to my constituent, who literally lives down the block from an exact scenario that they're trying to achieve, to say like, oh, I'm sorry, they built that before 2008, so, you know. Oops, my bad, that was my fault. You know, so sorry, you know, you just, you, bad timing, you bought your house in 2020. I don't know. It, I think we can do better, and I'm wondering if there's a reason not to consider offering a side lot privacy fence option for people?
Councilmember Loma?
I'll go one step further, because this was also one on my list too, so I'll join in with you on this one. You're not by yourself on this one. So I'm not sure, Mayor, if you remember this, and maybe Nelson, you were on the council too when, when it happened, but we, I think it was on Xerxes, I'm trying to think of where, and the gentleman came in, and he gave a pretty good case for exactly what Councilman DeLaSandro was talking about. And then we, we, we made an exception, and we allowed him to build the fence. And I'm trying to think exactly where it was, it's Xerxes, and I have to get the map out here. And I don't want to, and I don't want to, oh, you got it, yeah?
Yeah, 108th.
108th, and, and that's, how does that fit into all this? I mean, because we, we did exactly what she's talking about. I mean, literally, we did that. You know, and we had the rationale, I can't remember all the rationale, but we did exactly what you're talking about for that, for that one gentleman on, on the, on that corps, so.
Yeah.
I don't recall it, to be honest.
Yeah, there have been several variance requests since the, this was adopted in 2008. That particular one, I believe staff recommended denial, but the council did approve it. We've had several others where the council has denied the variance request, but certainly that route is open to residents. You would have to determine that they meet all the findings, practical difficulty, and that it's not economic in nature, et cetera.
So you're saying, Mr. Markergard, there, there is a, a path forward if a resident wanted to do this type of thing, as Councilmember Loma just kind of described. So I don't know if any changes are necessary, or if you just make known the path forward to folks that...
Mr. Mayor, I, I think that, that's fair. I think the, the hard no was given in the, in the, you know, the resident didn't know that there would be an option to. But it's expensive too, I think that the, if, if they initiate that, they have to pay and everything as well, don't they? And we charge folks for those kinds of reviews?
Mr. Markergard?
Yeah, Mayor Boosie, there's a, a fee, I believe it's $220, that helps defray the cost of notices and the staff review.
And I guess, yeah, fair enough, I, I understand all that. I just, if we believe that, if we believe that we're gonna see them happen, and we believe that we don't care and we're likely to approve them, then I don't know why we just don't go ahead and make the policy happen so that people can just get what they need done and not be in the, like, have to go through a process that takes weeks and months or whatever. But, because I can't see, candidly, I guess my point is, in my area, which isn't every area, I, I can't see the downside of a privacy fence on a side lot, on a corner. I mean, it, it, I get, you know, I mean, heck, there are cities, there's, there's units in this town that have a fence around the entirety of their property, right? That are not conforming. I'm not suggesting that we see that at all. But in these corner lot areas where you know you have a connector or arterial on one side, and you have a neighborhood on the other, neighborhood street on the other, it seems like the neighborhood street doesn't necessarily qualify as the, as the open design along streets requirement, because it's not really, that's what, you know, I, I don't know. Maybe I'm, I'm throwing it out there for consideration, and if you guys think that the variance process is the best way to go, I understand, but I wanted to at least raise it, since I have constituents asking about it.
Sure. And, and to be honest, I don't, so I haven't heard this. I mean, I, I mean, I do, you know, and I, they're all, but, but in my neighborhood, we, I don't see that in my neighborhood, and we don't, we don't talk about it in the neighborhood. So, so it's, I don't know, I'd look to the rest of the council. Is this something we want to consider? Is this worth putting the time and the effort in, asking staff to look into this, or just to rely on the, the variance?
Well, I think that, you know, I, I think the problem with relying on the variance is what she, she, she mentioned. And it's a good one, right? You know, we talk about equity and inclusion, and, you know, in our terms of our new, and in terms of our new standard, and I think we gotta think about that, you know? Is that a dissuasion from folks being able to do that, that, that $200 fee? I don't think it is, but that could prevent somebody from doing it. And, you know, and I can't, you know, I, I see all these other standards here. Well, I was here, I initiated that one, I did that one, I voted for that one. So, I mean, so I can't with a straight face sit here and tell you, well, no, you can't do that in your neighborhood, or we shouldn't look into it. So I, you know, I mean, that was a different council too. So I think most of the folks have changed up here other than, because I think, Sean, you told me that, no, you would have never done that.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would be in favor of doing this without a variance. I mean, I think variances have strict standards that, you know, there has to be a significant need typically in there, and, and it's going to sometimes be difficult to find that there's that strict need. I mean, the, the house is operated fine for the people living there without a fence for years to say that, oh, I have to have this fence now as a high standard to meet. And yet, I, I think they should be able to have the fence. And then in terms of the process, I mean, I know I've raised this before off of Minnesota Bluffs, there's a small lot community there that has some, I think one of them is actually a through lot, so it's, it's the backyard, and because of that setback, it puts the fence into an odd location. Then across the street from them, there's a side yard setback issue of where they could put the fence, and that, at the end of the day, they're like, well, it doesn't make sense to have a fence when I then only have a 10-foot yard to use it in. It, it, it's peculiar to that neighborhood because it is a small lot division. I mean, they were purposely designed that way, so they don't have much space to begin with, and then with all the stuff. So that would be one thing I'd just add, is to take a look at, clearly, you have to maintain views, clear view triangle, all of those things. I don't think anybody disagrees with that, but, you know, they'd just like to be able to sit out there with their family and not have everybody driving down Minnesota Bluffs looking at them.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor, I would agree with that. As someone who just rebuilt their firehouse fence two years ago, having to go through a variance process, pay that money, on top of the issue that I ran into is, if I waited, I couldn't get on the list of a contractor to come out and do it until the fall, when I needed it in the summer. And so ultimately, I made the decision to build it myself because it was cheaper and I could do it. But then to have to try to go through the process of getting a variance to allow me to do that, that like dissuaded me from doing any of that and just falling back into what was allowed currently at the time. So having the opportunity to have a non-variance opportunity to come to the city and say, hey, this is what I want to do, it still remains safe, but provides me more access to the yard, because right now, half of my yard is unusable because it's a side lot. And I can't put a fence in there, my kids can't explore more. And so I would be supportive of that too. Because I don't, honestly, don't think, given the process and having been through it, that we would get significant numbers, because there's a time sensitivity of when you need a book with your contractor. There's a money aspect to it, because it gets more expensive the longer you wait. And so giving people the ability to quickly make decisions and move forward while maintaining pop process with the city, I think, is a good option, without slowing them down.
Councilmember Rivas?
I support the, to look into it. That's all I'll say, I'll keep it short.
I, it sounds like you have your direction, Mr. Markergard, and let's figure out a way to make this work.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, it may be that it's a side lot versus front lot thing, right? Nobody's talking about the front lots, right? I'm not that, but there's, on a corner, you have to define one or the other. And I think right now, most people are saying, oh, no, it's actually two front lots. And it's like, it's not two front lots. And I think that that, we start, we start with that problem. And so if we can address it, I think it'd be great. Thanks for the consideration.
Councilmember Carter, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there.
No, it's okay. I would say in general, I'm supportive of having further conversations about it. I will say personally, just like my personal opinion, like when I, there are some lots that I drive by, corner lots, that when they, when there are the fences that are not in compliance, like, it can, like, it doesn't, it doesn't always look as good, or like it kind of feels, like it creates a disconnection from, like, the rest of the neighborhood. I guess I'll just say that, and I don't know if there's any consequences to that. And so I guess I would just be interested to know, you know, if we were to make the change, like, are there some unintended consequences that we should at least discuss to make sure that we're making a fully informed decision? Like, in general, I kind of feel like, you know, if somebody wants to put a fence on a part of their lot so that their kids can play or they can have privacy, like, I'm just like, yeah, it seems like a no-brainer, but I just feel like there might be some other things to consider. And so I'm, I'm, I'm in support of having more conversations, but I'm not committing to like which, like if I would vote a certain way in the end or not, if that makes sense.
Thank you, councilmember, and I think that's, that's a good summation. I think to bring, have staff bring something back to us, and, and obviously, if it's an ordinance change, I think we'd want to have, you know, we'd have a public hearing and talk about, talk, talk through it all and get public input as well, so I would agree with that, so.
All right.
Window coverings.
Moving on, last item. Yeah, the, so on window covering standards, they were adopted back in 2006. I would note that these standards apply only to commercial and mixed-use districts. I'll go ahead and read, this is straight out of the code. It says, "For windows facing public or private streets or pedestrian corridors, no more than 25% of the total window area and no more than 25% of that linear eye-level window width may be obscured by," and it specifically calls out, "signs, film coverings, product displays or similar covering." And then it goes on to basically give an exception, which is, it says, "blinds, curtains, and temporary, and similar temporary coverings for privacy or sunlight control are permitted." So to show you one example, this is at France and Old Chocopee. This is a code-compliant Bank of Windows multi-tenant center along Old Chocopee Road. You can see, meets the standard, there are windows that have blinds behind them. I'm assuming for either privacy or sunlight control in those areas, and, and the blinds are, are totally allowed. So that's not a violation, and you can see nowhere have the signs covered more than 25% of the windows. So the reason behind the standard, again, very similar to the fence standards, it gets back to crime prevention through environmental design, the idea of having eyes in the streets, natural surveillance of those common areas, sidewalks especially. And then beyond just the crime prevention aspects, there's also the idea of creating a more comfortable pedestrian environment. You know, walking down a sidewalk, if nobody can witness it except maybe people driving by, I think most people just feel more uncomfortable. If there are several, you know, opportunities for people to, to see where you are, you just naturally feel more comfortable in that area. The big difference between film, for example, on windows that permanently covers it, and blinds, is that people may or may not look out of blinds. You know, you never know if somebody would, whereas if it's just totally covered, the whole bank of windows with film, you know that no- if it's just totally covered, the whole bank of windows with film, you know that nobody's going to be, uh, looking out of those windows. So those are kind of the two, uh, reasons that were behind the standard. Um, I'd point out, here's another example. This is, uh, Fresh Time, the south side of Fresh Time Grocery. This is at, uh, Eightieth and a Half Street near Penn Avenue. You can see some of these windows are covered in film and as long as it doesn't exceed 25% of the, you know, either the linear eye width or the total window area, that's fine. So this is a code compliant example of where they have used film in certain rooms. I think, uh, some of these rooms are like they might have a freezer there, um, behind that area. So just want to point out that you can do even permanent, uh, window covering as long as it's not over 25%. But are there any questions on this window covering standard or any direction on modifications?
Councilmember DeLisandro?
You might as well. So this came up for me because of a specific situation with veterinary clinic and, um, the, the challenges associated with, um, having rooms for euthanizing pets that were, could not be completely covered to provide privacy for, uh, folks experiencing that pain and loss. So I wonder if there can be an exception in a particular situation where you have medical situation, um, uh, that we could potentially consider something like that, where you have a particular medical or veterinary use, um, that might be, uh, something we can accept out of the normal policy. I completely understand the policy, um, don't disagree with it. But, um, you know, the, the fact is, you know, if, if anybody's ever dealt with a, uh, you know, being in a medical environment or being in a veterinary environment where you're dealing with the euthanization of a pet or whatever, privacy is of the utmost and it's important. And it's exactly because of that pedestrian mod, that pedestrian visibility that we're trying, that they were uncomfortable with the choices that they had to make instead. Um, so, um, you know, I, I don't know if there's an option to go, hey, it can be up to 75% if it's a medical use or something to that effect.
Mr. Markergard, is, is there any, are there any exceptions right now for medical use? I, I can think of an eye clinic right up the road here that is right on the street level.
Yes. Uh, Mayor Bussey, uh, there are no exceptions. However, uh, most of the medical uses use and, and veterinary uses use blinds, um, fairly significant full privacy blinds, uh, which is allowed by code. They could also have permanent film too, if it didn't cover more than 25% of the window bank. Um, I know, for example, the Wellhaven, uh, veterinarian and, and kind of dog daycare, uh, combined use at, at Penn and American, they use, uh, pretty significant blinds, um, for example. So that, that would be an option. I know, um, like I use the Fairview Clinic on 98th and have had examination rooms right on, right along, uh, Old Chocopee Road. And there, of course, they have the, the blinds drawn.
Yeah. So I, I mean, blinds are an option, I would guess.
They're just expensive. I mean, the, the fact is that the cost of, of blinds in, you know, if you, if you want to sit down and talk with them, you can hear it, but it was, you know, a 10-digit addition to their, like, you know, because of their privacy blinds, right? Cause they're high density, they're, they're, you know, opaque, et cetera. Um, it just costs a lot more for the people, you know, in small businesses to implement that. If they could put window film on these areas, um, it would not have cost that much and they would have been, not had to order them and wait eight weeks and all the other stuff that delayed their ability to open, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, my point is that there seems to be a legitimate use case potential for medical or veterinary use that we could consider to provide some that, some optionality here. I'm okay if we say no, but I wanted to throw it out there since that happened recently and it affected a, uh, a good small business in our community.
And I guess I, I knew you could spend a lot of money on blinds. I didn't know you had to spend that money on blinds.
Well, I mean, it comes down to it, like, you know, I, yes, you can go into a, uh, and get crappy blinds, but then you're not giving the privacy. And so if I'm somebody who is sitting in that space, who's about to euthanize my dog, I don't want somebody to be peering in through a crappy blind and watching my, you know, my terribly difficult circumstance, right? And so, I mean, that, that was the sensitivity that was brought to my attention in, in that particular scenario that made it, I mean, having had gone through it recently. Um, yes, we lost our cat like two weeks ago. So, um, you know, these things are, these are things are important at the times that they're important. And I think they were trying to think ahead on that front. Thanks.
Councilmember Carter?
Um, I, I may have misheard you, Councilwoman DeLisandro, but I think you said like a 10-digit number or something whenever you said the cost. And I, that's why maybe, maybe Mayor Bussey was wondering about the cost. But, um, I, I am supportive, but I also feel like we have to take a more comprehensive view because I can think of a lot of, I can think of several other kinds of businesses who would maybe prefer privacy. Um, and so, uh, if we were to go down this route, I would just want to think a little bit more, um, holistically, like if there are other kinds of businesses who might also be in that same position. Like I think of like estheticians, people who are getting facials, like whatever. I mean, there's like all kinds of other, um, businesses. So, uh, that'd be my comment.
Councilmember Lohman?
Certainly sympathetic to the, uh, to the idea and I think we should look into it. But the question I, I have, um, with some of these uses and those types of things is, um, you know, you know, I've been to several clinics and that kind of thing, you know, for those things that are sensitive uses, you know, are there other parts of the building that can be utilized, uh, for those types of things? Um, you know, that would keep it away from that. Or, you know, as, as, you know, as the planner has mentioned here, as, uh, Mr. Markergard has mentioned, you know, having a couple of those rooms where you put the film down on it and then you kind of move forward. So I, I just, I, I'm, I'm nervous about making a wholesale change. Um, and, and, and what, I guess my fear is from a policy perspective is, is what are you going to be putting in and out of this thing? And it's going to get, it's going to get really tricky as we kind of get down there to, to the individual things. And that's where I get nervous about, uh, about this. I think we definitely ought to, you know, look into it, but I'm just concerned, um, that, that, uh, that there may be a better way to, to, to rationalize or solve this.
Others?
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, I meant to say it was tens of thousands, 10,000, five digits.
I heard ten figures also.
Yeah, I apologize. Now, I think that's what, Councilmember Carter.
I was putting my head and I couldn't come up.
No, no, it was like, it was a difference between like a couple of hundred versus like $10,000, which is not insignificant.
No, it's not.
But not 10 digits. I misspoke. I apologize. It's not a $10 million. No, sorry. Thank you for that. It's, it's, it's late. I apologize. I, now, thank you, Councilmember Carter for correcting me. Appreciate that.
Uh, thoughts on this council? I'm seeing shrugs. I don't, I wonder if there are.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm just wondering, I mean, we've talked about a couple of different things tonight and I, you know, I know we just approved the planning commission, work plan a couple of weeks ago. Um, I'm just wondering, like, if we're saying, yep, let's dig into some of these, does that mean that we are de-prioritizing other things? Or is this just going to go to the bottom of that list and we'll eventually get to it, whether it's the end of this year or next year? I'm just kind of curious, you know, again, if we're prioritizing these things, is that de-prioritize other things?
I, I would agree. And I don't know that I would put this as a high priority. Um, this would be, you know, if, if everything else, um, I, I just don't know that it, honestly, I, my, my own personal opinion, I don't know that it's a high priority and I don't know that it can't be solved with other measures as well. So I don't know that we need to make a, a wholesale ordinance change, uh, when, when there are other possibilities. You know, it's not, it's, uh, it, it's different than a, you know, a fence in the backyard is a little more significant than I think curtains or blinds in, in a, a privacy room, a privacy situation. I don't know.
I appreciate that. Um, I just wanted to make sure we considered it. It is expensive for small businesses to, to, some of these things just end up being cost prohibitive and, and take more time. It's not so much that the ordinance itself is a bad one as much as it can really slow down the process for some of our smaller businesses who are trying to get up and running. So we don't have to do anything about that, but maybe there's flexibility within the planning department to create exceptions or something then if that's the right answer, if we're not going to do something ordinance-wise. Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, may I?
Uh, let me, let me have Councilmember Nelson jump in first and then I'll come to you, Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Nelson?
Um, Mayor, if, can you remind me or somebody, uh, it, there is a work plan item for planning to look at being more small business friendly.
That is true.
Should we just throw this in with that?
That is true. That's a good, that'd be a good solution. Look at you solving problems. Well done.
Sorry, Councilmember Carter.
I was gonna say, great minds think alike. That was exactly what I was gonna say.
I saw your idea and I took it.
Very good. That's a fine compromise. Appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Markergard, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else for Mr. Markergard tonight?
No, thank you.
We will wrap up our meeting this evening as we always do. Item 5.4, our city council policy and issue update. Quick review of our city council listening session, which is the most attended city council listening session that we've had since we changed the listening sessions, uh, thanks to our friends, uh, our birdwatching friends. Um, Sally Ness was there, uh, with concerns about obstructed handicap parking at 821 Park Avenue. We agreed to take a look into it and encouraged her to make a police call if, uh, she saw instances of illegal, uh, handicap parking or blocked handicap parking within that parking lot. Chris Ann Loria was there and this was representing the birdwatching group, uh, talked about restoring, uh, she's a member of Restore the Nine and they are a group that is, uh, uh, intent on protecting and restoring the Nine Mile Creek corridor and, uh, had a lot of, uh, ideas and, and thoughts regarding the work that's going to be going on as part of the Nine Mile Creek restoration effort that, uh, was passed last, uh, last November by voters in Bloomington. So we'll be, uh, excuse me, working with them on, uh, I invited them to be part of the community engagement and input on that. Uh, Amanda Heiser was there. Uh, she was encouraging that Bloomington continued the protection of trades and construction workers in, uh, in Bloomington, especially in new construction and, uh, talked specifically about some, some specific, uh, uh, items such as wage, wage theft and, and some of the work that we've been doing about worker protection. And then Dan Mahoney had, uh, some frustrations about his garbage pickup service, how he has not, uh, he's had a couple of times where he hasn't gotten his garbage picked up on Friday and then he gets held off until Monday. I think Councilmember Nelson reminded us that indeed it was in this contract that if there was a miss on Friday, then haulers are required to come back out on Saturday to do the pickup. So, uh, we, we need to consider, we need to continue to work with, uh, Dan on that and continue to work with every time, uh, we want to, and we told Dan this and others this as well, every time there's a missed pickup, please do call in and let the city know about it. We'll get the, we'll get the trucks back out there to pick up for you. But also we want to know who is missing pickups either individually or across neighborhoods in, in the city of Bloomington. And, um, as I said, that was a, we had a, we had a full house at our listening session tonight. So, good. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I do have one, uh, I won't say a substantial item, but more than 30 seconds. Uh, I don't like to read to you usually, but I'm going to read to you for a moment. Um, last week we were, um, alerted that Metropolitan Council, uh, was, uh, going to, um, was going to delay or defer funding for the Livable Communities, um, Act. So the Community Development Committee of Met Council met last Monday, uh, while they were discussing the, the LCA's, that's Livable Communities Act, uh, fund distribution plan. Um, they had a fair amount of discussion between staff and the, the committee, uh, and the committee voted to fund the tax-based revitalization account and the local housing incentives account for 2024. But they voted, uh, four to three to pause funding for transit-oriented development and the Livable Communities Development Account Program, um, both of those programs, uh, with the intent of reviewing those programs during 2024 before potentially restoring funding in 2025. Um, so Metro Cities, uh, is, their, their, um, their policies support the LCA program access to cities across the region. Uh, it supports flexibility in the program criterion and, and, uh, supports efforts to promote local participation. Um, and they also stipulate since Metro Cities is the primary representative for our, um, cities in the region, working with the Met Council, that any changes to LCA programs, uh, really need to be done in part, with participation and input of metropolitan city officials. And so this one just kind of sprung up in the committee and now it's going to the full body on Wednesday. So what we would like to do in support of, uh, Metro, uh, Cities and our own concerns about that, um, funding stream, because we do have projects, uh, that are in the pipeline here that are planning to apply to these accounts. Um, we think that we need to maintain the funding in 2024. So I have, uh, a letter that our staff drafted for the mayor's signature to send to, uh, Councilmember Pacheco, our, uh, Met Council representative, so that he sees where we are and we're on record before the full council, um, uh, considers it on Wednesday afternoon. And it, it simply says it's been brought to our attention that the council, uh, uh, Community Development Committee is recommending pausing, uh, funding, uh, strongly urging not to approve the committee's recommendation. Bloomington, like many other cities, regularly submits LCDA funding requests to assist development projects that advance regional goals. We've discussed the LCDA program with Bloomington property owners and developers who are likely to make applications in 2024 and the proposed pause to the funding could well result in delays to development projects and reduce housing production in the city of Bloomington as we strive to meet our 2030 housing goals. So if you're generally comfortable with that, um, we'll have the mayor sign that and we'll ship it off to the Met Council.
Pretty good.
Okay. All right. Uh, one other item is I want to offer congratulations because about, uh, two hours ago, our assistant city manager, Michael Sable, was formally approved by the Maplewood City Council to be their next city manager. Congratulations, Mike. It's well deserved.
Congratulations, Mike. Well deserved and we're going to miss you. Well done. We'll have, we'll have more opportunity, I think, to fetch you in the future, right? Very good. Council, anything to add tonight? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm surprised that the city manager didn't mention the, uh, huge news of us, uh, and I'm not gonna, it was a week ago, there's so many other things that have happened. So I'll pause and see if he wants to say anything. Uh, I think he knows what I'm talking about, cause I don't want to steal your thunder.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Lohman, and, uh, appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk about it again. Uh, we had briefed the city council back in, uh, September, as a matter of fact, that, um, our, um, our local district of Rotary was, uh, uh, partnering with some of our surrounding districts, uh, to put forward an application to host the Rotary International Convention in Minneapolis in 2029. And, um, when last I, I talked to the council about that, it's because the site selection committee was coming here, uh, to review the Minneapolis proposal. And, um, we learned a couple of weeks ago that, uh, we were chosen by the Board of Directors of Rotary International to host. Uh, so forecasted attendance is probably 17,000 visitors, uh, to the region in 2029. And, uh, it'll be at the Minneapolis Convention Center. And so you may be asking, well, why, why are we getting excited about something that's going to be at the Minneapolis Convention Center? It's because, um, the, the application that put forward really depends on the, the partnership of all three cities of St. Paul, Minneapolis and Bloomington. And as you know, uh, Bloomington really is the epicenter of hospitality here, uh, in the region. We drive the, uh, hospitality economy with the Mall of America and our 47 hotels and our nearly 10,000 hotel rooms. So we will have a, a good representation, um, for, uh, helping to make sure that that event is going to be a very positive event. Uh, and frankly, it's a big win for the region. So I want to, uh, acknowledge last Monday afternoon, we had a press conference, uh, to announce it and thank the governor, uh, and, um, Mayor Frye, who both made time in their calendar, uh, to make that announcement. Mayor Bussey was there, a number of other, um, leaders from Rotary and some other places. So it's a, it's just a really good win for our region. Uh, and it's a really, uh, great event, uh, for people who aren't familiar with Rotary. Their motto is service above self and, uh, they have, um, they have a substantial, uh, footprint around the globe. So this is, this is going to be a really, really neat opportunity. Thank you, Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you. I wanted to just be sure you did that. And also, uh, you were on the planning committee, uh, for that. Want to thank you for your leadership, uh, uh, with that. And I just anecdotally, we had one hotel person who was very excited about, uh, in Bloomington here that I attended this afternoon and, uh, uh, he went on for many minutes talking about that. Um, so, uh, again, congratulations and thank you for that. It's just another example of how we're an international city. Um, I wanted to mention just, um, uh, one other thing, um, that I had the opportunity to attend with, uh, Councilmember, uh, uh, wow, I'm getting tired. We went to the elders conference, uh, Rivas, thank you. I'm just totally, I'm looking at you, I know your name, uh, Rivas. We both, uh, went to the elders conference and, uh, just an excellent, uh, experience. I know a number of their council members have had the opportunity to go, uh, there. Um, this year was a year where they had the property tax, uh, uh, piece and they've talked about how they have updated the property tax to make it even more complicated, uh, this year. And then, um, another piece of the, uh, there were a number of public finance, uh, pieces that we covered, uh, during that training. And one of the major pieces of they have a market update, uh, piece. And one, uh, item that, that seemed really interesting to me among a number of things is this idea of, uh, where commercial, uh, um, uh, towers and that type of thing are losing value uh, in the marketplace and the impact that that's having across, um, uh, across the country. I, I even saw, uh, the chairman Powell, uh, having that conversation at 60 Minutes and how that may impact some of the smaller banks, uh, actually last month. So I just think that's something we ought to be, be thinking about as we kind of go into, uh, our, our next, uh, you know, budget piece, as we kind of think about, uh, what's the landscape of our, our property taxes and, and what that looks like, uh, kind of going forward and what the impact would be to our residential, uh, areas as the, that, that whole public finance piece changes and shifts.
Thank you, Councilmember. Council, anything else?
And a lot of learning as well. It was very interesting to learn about taxation.
Financially run the city. It was very interesting.
Good. I'm, I'm glad, glad you had the opportunity to.
Thank you. I have the opportunity to do that. That's great.
Very good. Council, with no more business on our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second to adjourn. No further council discussion. Ms. Mercer?
Mayor Bussey. Councilman Carter. Councilmember Connor, Carter, my apologies.
Please, I get it.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Aye.
Councilmember Loman.
Rivas.
Councilmember Moa.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Rivas.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, council, for the discussion tonight. Thanks to the staff for your work. Thanks to everybody who joined us this evening. Have a great rest of your week.